and resources needed by the community during these trying times. The immigrant community, as well as African Americans and other groups, Chinese Americans, actually have gone on the ground since the wildfires because of the fear of ICE raids. We are going to stand in solidarity with those families. We will stand up for those families. And as you need resources, we will make sure that you have the help that you need to move forward in the community.
We are here to support our immigrants with Know Your Rights trainings. We have food resources, mental health support, and other resources for their children in these tough and challenging times.
We know with the recent raids and the ICE presence, families are afraid. They're concerned for their safety, for their rights, and what tomorrow may bring. And so we have assembled our team here to make sure that families are aware of their rights. We have a Know Your Rights campaign and are issuing red cards. We are conducting workshops and trainings for service providers, as well as community residents, so that they too are aware of what rights they have.
ICE was driving through the community. And so we have put together measures in place. And you'll see across the city, a number of organizations are finding ways to distribute food directly to families without putting them in harm's way.
In tiempos difíciles como estos, es importante reconocer y apoyar a las organizaciones que brindan consuelo, unidad, y apoyo tangible a quienes más los necesitan. Hoy nos encontramos aquí reunidos con varias organizaciones que hacen precisamente eso. No somos solos proveedores de servicios, somos vecinos, conectores, y defensores.
Improving safety for transit riders starts on the sidewalk. A citywide improvement program is giving bus shelters the upgrades needed to connect people to their bus. In Koreatown, the 150th Bus Shelter transformation was a cause for celebration.
We're here in Koreatown at the intersection of Olympic and Vermont Boulevard, celebrating the 150th installation of our staff bus shelter. Koreatown is the most densely populated neighborhood in all of Los Angeles with over 100,000 residents. And we're so excited to celebrate with the community. A phenomenal transformation of an existing bus shelter from a static to a much more modern amenity-featured bus shelter.
Welcome to Not Your Mother's Bus Stop, right? This is not what the bus stops looked like when I was in school and depended on them. It has lighting, it has Wi-Fi. If you've ever been on a bus stop and missed your bus, that surge of frustration is not knowing when the next one's going to arrive. But this tells you, it tells you when your next bus is coming. That's a sigh of relief.
We're talking about improved infrastructure for transit-dependent riders, many essential workers in a neighborhood that's been overlooked for too long. The technology aspect of this investment is huge, but as summers get warmer, sometimes the most important thing is shade. A shelter to catch a bus and make our constituents' lives a little bit easier.
Moving forward, I'd like to see more public and private partnership. When the city does the good work, we as a community need to amplify that message and let people know what's happening in the city of L.A., in particular, things that affect public transportation and infrastructure. We want to help get the message out, let them know that it's safe to be on the streets and taking public transportation once again.
So SNAP program is a very community-driven process. It was born out of the need to provide shelters to many of our seniors and our young people riding the bus and other public infrastructure, but also in communities like Koreatown where it's been very underserved for many, many generations, that the community of Koreatown has requested for these types of infrastructure being made here. And we're hoping to install many, many more across this community.
Find out how bus shelters across the city are being improved at streetsla.lacity.org. From bus shelter glow-ups to making improvements elsewhere. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez wants Angelenos to give their evaluations to the Department of Rec and Parks. That feedback will help to assess future needs for city parks.
Welcome, thank you all for being here. It's one of these really important opportunities for our community.
Today, we're at Lakeview Terrace Rec Center, where we are engaging in the park needs assessment, something that I fought for while I was on the Budget and Finance Committee, because I want Angelenos to be able to give direct feedback to the city of Los Angeles about their priorities and needs for their local parks.
Olin is a landscape architecture planning and urban design firm, and we're supporting the city this year in the Parks Needs Assessments. As a consultant, we help survey the community, to help do drawings, to help provide clarity, and to bring all of this data from the community engagement together to really help form a vision for the next 25 years under the direction of the Department of Rec and Parks.
Really, what we've been hearing is that people really want to see a lot of unprogrammed spaces to do recreational activities. They want to see the department focus on things like festivals, because the community has places to gather. So really, what we want to do as a part of our second phase of outreach is to talk more about those types of amenities and things that they'd like to see in their park system. Because again, for the next 25 years, we're really setting the standard for what we want to do. So we want a park system that reflects what we're hearing from the community, but also what we think they want to do going forward into the future.
We have a team, 13 different firms that are working to help the city on this under our leadership, and all of them are coming together with different knowledge sets and different expertise. So we have people that are experts at water, we have people that are experts at equity, we have people that are experts around public art, we have people that are experts around stormwater. And when that is coming together, we're able to map around the city where different priorities really show up. It's really great data, but then when we support it with what we're hearing directly from the community, I think that's where it's most interesting.
Everyone comes to their parks for different reasons. Some might come for youth recreational sports, some might come for childcare. So there's a number of needs that need to be met at our parks facilities, and we want to encourage families to be able to give their input so that we design a system that works for them. It's really important. space and for us to prioritize the funding so that we can invest in those improvements.
It's a college signing day celebration that means a bit more. Many students at this event are the first and their families to go to college, so the Community Investment for Families Department is adding some support into the festivities.
We're thrilled to celebrate our second annual college signing day, brought to you by the Community Investment for Families Department in partnership with the Youth Development Department. In our network of family source centers, we have 19 centers throughout the city, and one of our signature programs within the family source system is the College Corner Program. The College Corner Program helps young people apply for college, they help them apply for financial aid, they organize campus visits, and they do so much more to encourage not just the students, but their families to pursue a post-secondary education.
I am the first in my family and the first out of three siblings to go to university, and the university that I will be attending is Yale University.
The College Corner Program is a program that is available to any student that resides in the city of Los Angeles. So that is really the only criteria. It's open to every student, and we want more students to take advantage of these resources.
I'm here to celebrate my enrollment at Cal State Long Beach. I didn't feel confident in where I was going to go, but they helped me a lot. I've gotten more, more help than I feel like I deserve.
Today, we gathered with over 200 students, and they are attending some of the top universities, not just in the state of California, but we have students that will be enrolled at Yale University, at all of our top universities in California, such as UCLA, our Cal State System, our community colleges. So we're just so excited and thrilled to continue to support them as they move into this next chapter.
I'm really looking forward to be able to go and explore a new environment, new people, new culture, everything, and just be able to grow alongside so many people who aspire to learn and do something and change the world for the better.
Today, we also announced the creation of a new scholarship program, the Olivia Mitchell Scholarship Program, and we awarded them with $500 each to help support them in their college journey. We are sending a strong message to all of the families that we're here. We're here to support them, and we want them to break through all of the glass ceilings and be able to accomplish all of their goals and aspirations. To learn more about the family source system, we encourage people to visit our website.
Mayor Bass, Councilwoman Katie Yaroslavsky, and volunteers all got busy at the recent AAPI Day of Service. With L.A. hosting major events in the coming years, volunteering to do good has the extra benefit of showing the city in a positive light.
You ready to go out and beautify our city?
So we're here at one of 10 locations across the city for Shine L.A., which is a community beautification effort. So we're here in Koreatown with a bunch of volunteers from across the community to help clean it up and make it beautiful.
I want you to know, this gathering here, this is not the only one. Throughout the city of Los Angeles today, over 1,000 Angelenos are participating in the Shine L.A. Day of Service.
We need to get Angelenos in every neighborhood involved in beautifying our neighborhoods and preparing for major global events that are just around the corner.
Shine L.A. is the mayor's program to emphasize cleaning Los Angeles and getting ready for all these international visitors that we are expecting in '26, '27, '28, culminating in the Olympic and Paralympic Games. So we're here to basically get our house ready, because when you expect company, you're clean.
And one thing that is especially inspiring to me is to see so many young people here. And I hope this is the beginning of a lifetime of service.
Reach out to us if you have ideas on projects you want to work on. We're literally the thing that connects this neighborhood to City Hall.
We've all been living in this community for almost like our entire lives, so we want to beautify our community and where we reside in. People definitely turned out. They turned out, and they turned out with their attitude and their energy, and I'm definitely excited to be here. I feel like the community definitely benefits from this, and you can tell the heart is there.
So across the city, there are going to be events like this on a regular basis going forward for the next few years. We hope people come out, get involved. You can check out the website for Shine L.A. and figure out how to get involved in your own community.
Every one of our neighborhoods deserves to shine.
L.A. Public Library has online resources for immigrants and new citizens, city support for downtown businesses impacted by protests, and a new relief fund for disaster survivors. These stories up next on City Beat.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a number of Know Your Rights resources available online. Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution, and according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency family preparedness, immigration options, rapid response phone numbers for L.A., and the Know Your Rights Card. The library's Know Your Rights Card is available to everyone online in 23 different languages. For more information, click on the Know Your Rights banner at lapl.org. Mayor Karen Bass announced that resources would be immediately available to support downtown businesses impacted by protests in the city. The mayor's Office for Economic Development, Councilmember Isabel Hurado, and the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department are providing help online. Impacted businesses can join webinars to learn more about assistance, including graffiti removal, legal aid, and employment support. According to Hurado, local businesses are the backbone of downtown L.A., and the council member's office will support them through every challenge. For more, visit mayor.lacity.gov press. Following the devastating wildfires in January, L.A. City's Housing Authority, HACLA, wants to let Angelenos know of a new source of relief for disaster survivors. Cal Assist Mortgage Fund is a new relief program from the state of California, which will support homeowners impacted by disasters between January 2023 and January 2025. The Cal Assist Mortgage Fund will cover eligible homeowners for three months of mortgage payments up to $20,000. Before applying, review the list of qualified disasters for this program, confirm the income limits, and check that your mortgage servicer is participating. For more information, visit calassistmortgagefund.org.
L.A. Sanitation hosted its ever-popular Open House events this year. These are more than a simple open house, as the trash trucks are opened to kids taking on the controls. It's hands-on learning at its best.
Well, today, we're having our North Central Open House. This is an opportunity for our L.A. SAN employees to volunteer their time and engage with the community. And educate them on a lot of our programs, like our organics program, our recycling program. We really want to engage with the residents so that they understand the value in recycling. We have one earth, we have limited resources, and your actions as a resident of sorting your trash and making sure it's properly put in the bins allows us to convert those commodities into useful products and save the earth.
So here in the city of angels, it is so important for us to sort our trash properly, to understand the recycling rules and the organics rules, to make sure that we're calling in our bulky item requests, so that we're not leaving furniture sitting on the curb. L.A. SAN will come and pick it up for free. You just have to call us at 1-800-773-2489. You call Will Hall.
He is in love with garbage trucks. All the kids love garbage trucks.
What I love most about these events is all the families that come here and get to explore the trash trucks. Kids love trash trucks. So they come, they get in the trucks, they operate the controls, they honk the horns. Then they get into another truck where they can actually take a ride around the yard, and they just have a blast. It's a great photo opportunity. And after that, they walk through all of our educational booths and learn all about sustainability tips that they can implement in their own homes.
Our goal is here is to make sure that our residents know the value of what we do every day. Sanitation's out there collecting recyclables, organics, and trash for, you know, 750,000 residents and over 6,000 tons of materials, and making sure that that is reused and put back to use in our communities. A lot of people don't see us every day, but we are the ones behind the scenes protecting the environment.
For more information, please visit our website at lacitysan.org.
Senior prom is on the social calendar for older Angelenos who look forward to the dancing and the community gathering. It all takes place thanks to volunteers, St. Barnabas, senior services, and L.A. City's Department of Aging.
The participants today at the senior prom are older adults from across Los Angeles. It's really an opportunity for us to bring together different cultures, different people, to enjoy a day of fun, frivolity, and good food.
I like to see older people enjoy themselves, because I enjoy myself. I entertain them, so they, you know, I kind of bring them out. So they do a little try, too, you know? Do it. If I can do it, you can do it.
So I really hope today that the older adults, the volunteers, everyone that's here walks away with a new appreciation of different cultures, a fun experience, activities, dancing, and just a great time.
Good food and good entertainment. They have a picture-taking. We didn't have to pay for it. They have blood, so they don't have to pay for it, and then they bring a lot of stuff to offer us.
I was so excited to be part of this event, because it really brought together not only staff, older adults and caregivers, but also volunteers from across Los Angeles to really make an impact in people's lives. And it was so inspiring and has been such a rewarding experience.
Feels good, because we need more things for us older people.
So the senior prom was brought together through not only donations from companies, individuals, but also through funding from the Department of Aging and the city of Los Angeles. We're really honored to have the general manager, Jaime Pacheco, attend, and also councilperson, Nithya Ramen. Their support made this possible and made this event a real success.
Beautiful people, nice to see everybody happy.
So my favorite part of prom really has been seeing everybody dressing up, having a good time, and dancing. I love to dance myself. It might seem like it's just a dance, but for them, it's something they look forward to all year long.
So come out and enjoy yourself, to see what it's like. You will love it. I love it.
The lights behind the marquee are a distinct beacon on Lancashire Boulevard. Behind the scenes, this Department of Cultural Affairs Center is supporting performing arts in the community with a dance studio and an intimate theater space inside.
The Lancashire Arts Center was constructed in 1939. When it was opened in 1939, it was originally a L.A. Department of Water and Power building. The city of L.A. became the owner of the Lancashire Arts Center when it was declared as a historical cultural monument. On the plaque, its purpose was that it is an example of adaptive reuse. The front building is actually an example of streamlined, modern design. And then if you come here after, I think it's like 5:00 or 6:00, there's like lighting panels that will turn on, and then you get to see the full kind of marquee of the Lancashire Arts Center. We host a bevy of productions, be it dance productions, music productions. Sometimes we'll have a film screening. Art, I think that sort of flexibility is something that brings me back every time. The theater's very intimate here. It really feels like you're just right up in front of the talent when you come watch a show here. We also do youth programming here. We work with different local artists to be able to provide free programming for children to learn how to sew. We have a fashion class, we have music classes specifically for percussion and drums. We also have another music class for piano. And then we also have a dance studio. It's in our mezzanine. That is for our dance class that we have here. Our mission here is just to grow the performing arts, really. So whether it be someone trying to bring out their own original productions, or like sometimes we even have different groups come in to teach after-school classes, being able to grow the performing arts in a community is what makes Lancashire Arts Center stand out. The city investing into places like this is because it gives a place for people that were not as confident in the ability to express themselves, and it gives a space for people that are a little bit different, another space to play, because being able to play is so important, just for our mental health, as well as for like the health of the community, and it just makes the world a better place. We look forward to having you here at Lancashire Arts Center, whether it be taking part in our free programming, as well as being able to come and just watch a movie or watch a show. We look forward to having you over here. On Instagram, our Instagram handle is DCA underscore LNK. You can also find out more about us on culture.lacity.gov, that's our website.
In this week's Things to Do, get down to some free summer sounds at Levitt Pavilion, enjoy some tribute acts on July 4th and beyond, and catch L.A. master artists' work at COLA 2025. All this up next on Things to Do.
Calling all music lovers, join Levitt L.A. for 10 free summer concerts at MacArthur Park. Each Saturday in summer, Levitt Pavilion welcomes a new sound to the stage. Enjoy Latin soul, jazz fusion, Afro beats, and the sounds of Central America, along with electric rock and punk. Levitt Pavilion is the place to get your global groove on with something for everyone. These free concerts are supported by the City Departments of Cultural Affairs and Recreation and Parks, and are sponsored by Councilmember Unisus Hernandez. See you on the lawn to celebrate music and community, each Saturday starting at 7:00 P.M., except July 5th, as there's no show that day. For more information, visit levittlosangeles.org. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a summer of free events with the Valley Cultural Foundation. The Fourth of July Extravaganza celebrates the nation's birthday with a free concert and a dazzling 20-minute fireworks display. There will also be food trucks and vendors on site. Up to 40,000 people can be accommodated for this event, so get there early to claim your spot. The concert on July 4th features Strange Days, a tribute to the Doors, with other acts scheduled to perform in Warner Park over the next few weeks of summer. For more details on the Fourth of July Extravaganza and other free Warner Park events, check the website, valleycultural.org. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery, LAMAG, presents COLA 2025. This is an exhibition of the city's Department of Cultural Affairs' independent master artists of 2025, who share their creative visions on a wide range of themes. Nine L.A.-based artists in visual literary and performing arts will show their works, which include video, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and installation. Head to LAMAG at BarnesDole Art Park for COLA 2025 Visual Artist Exhibition from July 17th to August 30th. For more information on gallery hours, visit lmag.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Please check the websites for any changes to those events. And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week. week.
All right. Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the first day of July in the year 2025. Public comment will be taken in person for this morning's meeting in this chamber for a period of one hour. We will get to as many speakers as we can for a period of one hour. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Blumenfeld, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 11 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes to June 27, 2025?
Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember Blumenfeld second. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember Yaroslavski next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
All right. I'll ask everyone in the chambers to rise, face the flag, and follow along with Councilmember Price for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, if we can run through our agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, would counsel like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items 1 through 11 are items noted for public hearing. Item number four, the matter regarding the landside access modernization program at Los Angeles International Airport. For item number eight, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast, which are 87.02% to 12.98%. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. Item nine, tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast, 76.81% to 23.19%. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the Gateway to L.A. Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. For item 10, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast, 94.84% to 5.16%. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the West Adams Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. For item 11, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast, 81.30% to 18.70%. Thus, a majority protest is found not to exist, and the proposed establishment of the Lincoln Heights Industrial Zone Business Improvement District may be authorized at this time. Items 12 through 115 are items which public hearings have been held. For item 71, recommendation 2A, the account amount is $450,000 instead of $200,000. For items 77, 85, 86, and 103, financial disclosure statements have been submitted and are now online under the respective council files. For item 100, the Northwest Wood Neighborhood Council submitted a community impact statement of support for this. Items 116 through 150 are items which public hearings have not been held. Item 151 is a closed-session item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those items are before us. Specials members, any specials? Looking to my left, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call item 114, just to include in the first, in the therefore, I'm sorry, in the moving clause, to add in income consultation with the Department of City Planning, Bureau Sanitation, and Streets L.A. into the paragraph, and also items 120, 129, 134 for substitute motions, which I believe the city attorney has a copy of.
Excuse me, Councilmember Lee. So 114 is an amendment, yes?
Technical amendment. If you'd like me to, I can read the whole moving clause.
No, 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 that's fine, sir. But for an amendment for 114, is there a second for Mr. Lee's amendment? Ms. Rodriguez is the second, and the other items are 120, 129. And what were the other items, sir?
120, 129, and 134.
134, and 134 is a substitute motion, sir?
They're all substitute motions.
All substitutes. Okay. And for your substitute motions for 120, 129, and 134, are there seconds to your substitute motions?
Okay. They're being circulated. They're being circulated, I believe. City Attorney, do you have a copy of those items for the substitute motion?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Nazarian, then Councilmember Hut.
After you.
Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Nazarian. I'd like to rise to, in support of adopting the city attorney's revised ordinance dated 6/26/25 relative to the increase for parking meter fees for item number two.
All right, we got that. Madam Clerk?
And just to recap, that is item two, and Councilmember would like to adopt the revised ordinance? Correct. Okay. And is there a second to Councilmember Hut's? Councilmember Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, thank you.
And then I have another one. On item 108, I rise to amend recommendation three relative to the T-Committee report regarding the fourth transportation-related construction project report, and delete the clerk's instruction to agendize for 7/121, I mean 25, as it is no longer applicable.
And is there a second to Councilmember Hut's amendment to 108? Ms. Hernandez, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Nazarian?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call item 55 for a separate vote. Item 112 for questions. And then for item number 32, technical amendment. On attachment 10, page 148, the funding for the historical context statement should be $170,000, with only $20,000 allocated for overtime general.
Is there a second to Councilmember Nazarian's amendment to 32? Ms. Park, thank you.
All right. Any other specials on this side of the horseshoe? All right. We'll start over on this side with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'd like to hold item six pending a motion that I'm going to introduce shortly. Yeah, so we'll just keep that on the desk. And request items 77, 113, and 118 for a separate vote.
All right.
Councilmember, again, that's 77, 113.
And 118.
And 118, separate vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'd like to call item 15, 22, 23. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'd like to call item fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one, fifty-six, and one twenty-two for a separate vote. And for item one forty-nine, special for comments.
Uh, Councilmember, that's for separate vote items, that would be fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
And one twenty-two.
And one twenty-two, and forty-nine is special for questions?
One, one forty-nine for comments.
One forty-nine for comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilmember Roman?
Um, I'd like to hold items eighty-one and one thirty-seven for an amendment, and those amendments will be circulated very shortly. And I would also like to request a separate vote on item fifty-six.
Five-six, okay.
Thank you.
All right, and just all our amendments, uh, just for the record, we want to get those in before public comment starts, so we'll have a couple presentations, so there should be time. Councilmember Price?
Mr. President, I move to amend item fifty-eight on today's agenda to delete the clerk's instruction and adopt recommendations two A and B. I also want to continue item one twenty-three to August first, twenty twenty-five. And out of the bonus of caution, I'm recusing myself from item eighty because I am a landlord. I'm also accusing from items eighty-one, eighty-two, and one forty-three because my wife's employer has worked with one of the organizations on these items in the past. Lastly, I'm accusing from items one eleven and one twelve because it's unclear who is working on all these items. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Park?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call items thirty-two and one thirteen for amendments. Those are being circulated, and one thirty-nine for comments.
Got it. All right.
And, I'm sorry, just again, thirty-two and one one-three for amendments, and one thirty-nine for comments, Ms. Park?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I'd like to call fifty-eight special for an amendment, just to add some additional dollars. And number eighty, uh, wanted to, I have an amendment to that, but I'm basically moving B, but with a little bit of language that's being circulated. And then on one forty, I have some questions, but I'm assuming we're going in a closed session for that, so I'll save those. Thank you. So, questions on one forty?
Councilmember Gerardo?
Good morning, Council President. Thank you. I'd like to call item fifty-eight special for comments.
All right, Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call items, uh, special, item number one, special for an amendment, which is circulating, I believe. Item fifty-eight, item eighty-four, one twelve, and one forty-four for comments. Thank you. Oh, sorry, and eighteen for a special, uh, separate vote. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Hernandez, just to recap, one is amendment fifty-eight, eighty-four, one twelve, and one forty-four for comments?
Yes.
And for a separate vote again, what item was that one?
Eighteen.
One eight. Thank you.
All right, any other specials, members? All right. Pardon me? All right, the clerk needs a few minutes. Um, while the clerk is taking a few minutes to tally up, uh, our specials and amendments for the hundred and fifty-one items that are on the agenda today, I'll, uh, call on Councilmember Park for a very, very special, uh, presentation to the city council and the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. On January seventh of this year, we all thought it would be a day like any other at the start of a new year. Little did we know that life was about to change dramatically, especially for the residents of the Pacific Palisades. What began as a small brush fire quickly exploded fueled by dry vegetation and unprecedented wind conditions. Within hours, the fire was raging like nothing we have ever seen in Los Angeles. The entire community was overwhelmed. Homes were completely devoured by flames, even as our firefighters fought bravely to protect lives and property. In the end, twelve people died, six thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven structures were destroyed, including more than five thousand four hundred homes, one hundred and thirty-five multifamily buildings, and one hundred and sixty commercial properties. Another one thousand structures were damaged, and the scale of the devastation is staggering. At that moment, it was hard to imagine how we would even begin to recover. But then came the United States Army Corps of Engineers, led by Colonel Eric Swenson. The Corps arrived in the Palisades in early February. Debris removal began on Tuesday, February eleventh. By February fifteenth, the first property was cleared, and we never looked back. Thanks to Colonel Swenson's outstanding leadership, the Corps is carrying out the fastest, safest, and most community-integrated debris removal operations in California history, simultaneously with the Eaton Fire Cleanup in Altadena. Colonel Swenson and his team have cleared thousands of sites, setting a new standard for responsiveness, transparency, and trust. But what really sets Colonel Swenson apart, what earned him the love and respect of so many in the Palisades, wasn't just how fast he got the work done, it was how he showed up. Colonel Swenson met personally with residents who had just lost everything. He stood on their burned properties, and he listened. He answered questions, he returned calls, he made himself available. His commitment to being at every community meeting, town hall, or Q and A session, large or small, has been a masterclass in leadership through crisis. Everywhere I went in those first few awful days and weeks, Colonel Swenson was there. Every briefing, every press conference, every community meeting. His mere presence in the room offered assurance. Colonel Swenson took my frantic calls at all times of day and night. He heard my concerns, and then helped me lead our community through it all. From fights over household hazardous materials to hall routes to traffic on Sunset and PCH, Colonel Swenson stood with us through it all. He never minded my endless to-do list, please do this first, also do this first, and also these ten other things that I need you to do first. He was a great sport through it all, lifting us up in the hardest days of our lives. Colonel Swenson, you've been a steady voice in a sea of uncertainty, and a source of strength and assurance when we needed it most. You didn't lead from behind a desk. You led from the front lines, side by side, with our community. And that's why we're here today alongside members of the Palisades community, to thank you, Colonel Swenson, for your tireless efforts in leading the debris removal and recovery operations. Colonel Swenson, your work has not only helped us clean up what was lost, it's helped us rebuild what was broken. And for that, on behalf of the Pacific Palisades and a grateful city, I offer you our deepest thanks. We have a video that we'd like to share as we look back to where we, where we were and where we are. Colonel Swenson, it's, it's hard and profoundly moving to look back, um, and to be reminded of what happened, and, um, the fact that you came into our life in the worst days of it. Um, we are so incredibly grateful to you, the community of the Pacific Palisades and this Council District eleven and the city of Los Angeles, that we've actually arranged another surprise for you as a way to say thank you for everything that you've done. We have one more very special video for Colonel Swenson.
Hello. I want to personally say thank you to Colonel Eric Swenson for your outstanding leadership in the wake of the Palisades fire. This fire scorched over one thousand acres, forced hundreds of families to evacuate, and caused widespread damage. In a time of uncertainty and fear, you and your team brought hope to the Palisades community. Your team cleared debris, repaired infrastructure, and restored essential services. But that's exactly what you trained for. What really set you apart is the trust you built with the community. As you said, you could only move at the speed of trust, and the remarkable progress you and your team made demonstrates the trust you earned. You focused on the people as much as the project, using compassion and empathy to build real relationship. Your approach says so much about the kind of person and leader you are. Our Corps of Engineers are often the first to engage devastated, recovering communities, and we need compassionate leaders like you. So, thank you, Colonel Swenson. I wish you and your family all the best as you move to command the North Atlantic Division.
I couldn't have said it better than the secretary himself. Colonel Swenson, if you'd like to say a few words, we'd be honored.
Thank you, Councilwoman. For those of you who know me, you know I'm not usually, uh, short on words, and I gravitate towards the mic. Uh, I'm honored to be here today. I'm honored to be here in this community for the past, going on five months, five and a half months. I'll miss L.A. You've been through a lot, um, but the future is bright, and I hope to come back soon and, and watch, uh, the phoenix rise from the ashes. Thank you.
Councilmember Park, uh, before the, before the big finish, uh, we have a handful of members on the queue that would, uh, like to say a few words, beginning with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Councilmember Park, for bringing in Colonel Swenson. And I have to imagine, uh, in your career, the amount of devastation that you've helped so many communities recover from has got to be immense. But, as the secretary says, it's what you train for. And it's really an embodiment of what so many incredible civil servants do in dedication in their career paths to help our communities. And so often, you know, when, when the, the cheap politics and the words come out about, uh, who government is, you are the embodiment of exactly who our dedicated civil servants are. They support us in the midst of these emergencies and these crises, whether they're on the front lines in the firefight, and they're there in the recovery, whether it's from the Army Corps of Engineers, and it's at all levels of government. It's with our Bureau of Engineering, it's with our Street Services, all of our incredible dedicated civil servants. So, I want to say thank you so much for dedicating your life's work and career to being a servant to the people. And thank you for all of, I, you know, I know what a tremendous burden that is on your heart to have to be there and exhibit such incredible strength and focus to perfecting your work, to being the exemplary leader that helps to lead an entire group of people who have, of course, a thousand different opinions about the way it should go. But thank you for dedicating your life's work to our country in this manner of service, because you do help to accelerate the rebuild. And for all of those phoenixes that rise from the ashes, L.A. is just going to be the latest version of that. But thank you so much for your incredible work and service here in Los Angeles. We are deeply, deeply grateful. Thank you.
Councilmember Padilla?
Colonel, I also just kind of want to thank you. Uh, I think you have truly become the face of productive access and friendly access on behalf of our federal partners. Uh, I want to be, I want to specifically thank you for showing up to the town hall that we had at Sun Valley at Poly. You witnessed how many questions, uh, you know, my region had related to how, what our role was on behalf of the cleanup. And there was a lot of tension, and there was a lot of questions, but we appreciate that you came with the answers, really led the conversation, uh, on behalf of all of the departments and how it works in collaboration. And it really helped to tone down, um, what people were feeling. You were really the one that gave us all of the contact information for everyone. We've consistently been sharing it on our newsletter, and I can't tell you how much the community, uh, appreciated that. So, thank you. Um, we're gonna remember you, uh, because I don't think I've ever really been able to put a face to anyone, um, on behalf of the Army Corps of Engineers, but you really made your mark. So, congratulations. Thank you. We really appreciate it. Um, we need more people that, uh, get things done the way you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilwoman Tracy Park, for bringing in the Colonel. Colonel, thank you so much for all the work you've done to rebuild, uh, not only the city, but particularly these zip codes. That means so much to our city. We were, we are going through different types of crises, and to see you here and your folks that you've brought here to help us, to uplift us, to protect us, is very reassuring. And I am grateful that you were able to serve here in this city when there are many things happening all across the country. But my deepest gratitude to you, to your team, to your family, for letting you be here with us to rebuild the city, and thank you for giving us such a beautiful image of a phoenix rising from the ashes. I think now more than ever, we need to be inspired, and so I'm just glad that it's coming from a leader like you. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilmember Hut?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman Park. As you know, the Palisades is deeply personal. My son went to middle school there, my niece went to high school at Palisades. And, and to know that this was in your hands, and that you made a difference, and that you made people in the Palisades and- you made people in the Palisades and the city feel confident that we could get this done, really proves your leadership. We appreciate your, your service. We appreciate that you signed up for this to be your career, and we are excited about what the future looks like because of you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Park, for bringing this presentation. And thank you, Colonel, for bringing the might of the US government to our city, to this neighborhood, and getting this work done in record time, which we're going to keep screaming it until somebody pays attention. But it is a great story. It is good news in the City of Los Angeles, and you've been at the forefront of that. So, thank you, Colonel. Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Colonel Swenson, on behalf of the mayor and the entire City Council and a very grateful City of Los Angeles, we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank you for your incredible work and service to our city and our community. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. Another big round of applause for the Colonel. All right. For the record and for the public, Special One has been introduced. The findings are in the motion, and the motion is posted on the bulletin board for all those who are interested in it. All right? And for our vignette from our communities, given the situation that we're here in, here in the City of Los Angeles in Southern California, I want to call in Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, what's happening in our, to our immigrant communities is, is menacing. These are isolated cases or bureaucratic missteps. This is cruel, and it's calculated. Neighbors are being taken off our streets in broad daylight without warning, without a badge, without a trace. Families are being torn apart in ways that feel scripted for a movie or a show, but it isn't. It's fiction. This is real life, a walking nightmare, where masked men in unmarked cars are allowed to snatch people off the streets without explanation. It shakes the very foundation of who we are. Well, that's what happened to Julie, a mother of three, a community leader, a woman who's called South LA home for over two decades. Taken on her way to work, disappeared for simply asserting her rights, for refusing to vanish quietly. In her moment, her family would share more of the hell they've been living through. The fact that what happened to Julie isn't just about one person, it's about the kind of country we're becoming. And it's what's happening right now will go down as one of the most shameful chapters in our nation's history. Even in the face of all this, our love for one another is louder. They can't silence us, they can't sue us, they can't militarize our streets, and they can't take away our dignity as people and our values. No one man, no king, no president will ever do that. But today, I'm honored to be joined by Julie's sister-in-law, Guadalupe Gonzalez, along with her two daughters, Angelina and Jennifer. Guadalupe?
Thank you, Consal, um, Price. Hi. I'm Guadalupe Gonzalez, but everybody know me by Lupita, because I'm the senior house organizer with ACE. But I'm here not because I'm an organizer, because I'm family and be impacted by this situation and terrorists we have here in LA. My two nieces, they, they have almost a week without the mother, and then we don't know where is she. And then, we don't know who taking. We calling ICE and Homeland Security, and Homeland Security says, "We don't have nobody with that name." And then, it's not only Julie from our community, it's more at 2,000 people like that. When we looking for every single detention center, looking for Julie, we find other people in the same situation with us. They don't know where their families, they don't know what they, they happen, and then we know what happened. The contractors from the government, the federal government took these people without the law. And then, I asking everyone here to do something, make a call, send a letters to our senators, to our Congresswoman or Congressmen, to do something to find these people is terrible. In United States, we have this situation that I'm, I'm really, really impacted. It's no answer. We went to police, and then they don't want to take our, the report, because we don't know what happened with Julie. But then, finally, they took the report. But after that, what are we waiting for? To acting? And then, I please do something for our families, for our loved ones, and then for our communities? Because it's impossible our communities live like that, unfair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Price, and thank, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the courage to tell your stories and communicate to the world that watches LA City Council the horror that our city is undergoing during these times. Madam Clerk, we have a tally of items that will help us proceed with the rest of the meeting.
Yes, sir. First, council may vote on items 12 through 14, 16 through 17, 19 through 21, 25 through 27, 29, 33 through 54, 57, 59 through 76, 78, 79, 83, 85 through 107, 109, and 110, sir.
All right. Those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right.
Next, council may now vote on the separate vote items that members called special. First would be item 55, that was called special by Councilmember Nazarian for a separate vote.
All right. Let's open the roll on 55, called special by Mr. Nazarian for a separate vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one.
All right.
One no.
Next set of separate votes would be called special by Councilmember Rodriguez, and those are items 77, 113, and 118 for separate vote by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Sorry, Ms. Rodriguez, so sorry, apologies, but it's 77 through 113 that's called special for a separate vote.
77 through 113?
77 and 113.
77 and 113. Okay, got it.
No, actually, so, just a correction, it was 77 and 118 for a separate vote, and 113. There were the three. However, 77 and 118 just uploaded their financial disclosures, so I, we want to go ahead and take those two. We can take those two, and I'm supportive of those now.
Okay. For the record, again, is 77 and 118 are now available to vote on.
All right. Let's open the rolls, roll on those two items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right.
All right. The next separate votes are called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez, and those are items 15, 22, 23, 24, 28, 30, and 31.
All right. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
All right. What's next?
Next, item 18 called special by Councilmember Hernandez for a separate vote.
All right. Let's open the roll on that item. Called special by Councilmember Hernandez for a separate vote. Let's close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, two noes.
All right. What's next?
Next is item 56 called special for a separate vote by Councilmember Ramon.
All right. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, three noes.
All right. What's next?
Next would be items Council, Councilmember Price is recused from, and those would be item 81, 82, 111, and 112, sir.
All right. Mr. Price is not in the room and is recused and is off the board. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll on those items, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. What's next?
Uh, next would be findings for Special One, sir.
All right. Let's open the roll on the findings for Special One, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right. Madam Clerk, may we proceed to close session with the city attorney?
Oh, sorry, sir. 118 needs to be reconsidered, because it needs public comment.
All right. So, we will reconsider item 118 when, after public comment?
Yes, sir. Item 118 can be reconsidered at a later date, so, at later, during this meeting. So, if council would like to go into closed session, it may do so, sir.
All right. We'll go into closed session at this time to hear from our city attorney. So, we'll ask the sergeants to help us prepare the room for closed session. That means you are only here if you're a city attorney or staff of a council member, the mayor's office, or the comptroller's office. There will be public comment.
Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a number of Know Your Rights resources available online. Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution, and according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency family preparedness, immigration options, rapid response phone numbers for L.A., and the Know Your Rights Card. The library's Know Your Rights Card is available to everyone online in twenty-three different languages. For more information, click on the Know Your Rights banner at lapl.org. Mayor Karen Bass announced that resources would be immediately available to support downtown businesses impacted by protests in the city. The mayor's Office for Economic Development, Councilmember Isabel Hurado, and the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department are providing help online. Impacted businesses can join webinars to learn more about assistance, including graffiti removal, legal aid, and employment support. According to Hurado, local businesses are the backbone of downtown L.A., and the council members' office will support them through every challenge. For more, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. Following the devastating wildfires in January, L.A. City's Housing Authority, HACLA, wants to let Angelenos know of a new source of relief for disaster survivors. Cal Assist Mortgage Fund is a new relief program from the state of California which will support homeowners impacted by disasters between January 2023 and January 2025. The Cal Assist Mortgage Fund will cover eligible homeowners for three months of mortgage payments up to $20,000. Before applying, review the list of qualified disasters for this program, confirm the income limits, and check that your mortgage servicer is participating. For more information, visit calassistmortgagefund.org.
A really scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is L.A. Current.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number-one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C for compress. Use any clean cloth. Apply the dressing directly to the wound and press down hard. Push down on top of the wound with both hands as hard as you can. If blood soaks through the dressing, do not remove it. Add another dressing on top and continue applying steady pressure. Do not release the pressure to check the wound. Keep steady pressure until help arrives.
Hi, I'm Eric Scott, Captain and Public Information Officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Often people ask us really, what is brush clearance and why is it important? So simply put, brush fires continue to threaten life and property in the very high fire hazard severity zone. So that means areas that are prone to wildfires. And having brush clearance provides us the defensible space to save those lives and property. So particularly, when you're clearing all of those ground fuels or the lower vegetation, that really helps us because it'll present what is called the fire ladder. And that's when the fire starts off low on the ground and it starts to climb upward to where it gets spread by winds. So what you might see is an amber wood land on the ground. It would ignite our, the grass that is there, what we call is light flashy fuel. Then it's going to jump to those lower hanging limbs or those branches and starts to climb up the tree, ignites that heavier fuel, and that just exacerbates the problem. So this requirement does not apply to your healthy fruit trees or privacy hedges or ornamental shrubbery, uh, as long as that's all well-maintained, meaning that it's free of all dead and dry material. Also, people ask, well, what are the basic brush clearance requirements? So your basic requirements are this: You want to trim the weeds and the grass down to three inches. You need to trim the bottom third of a bush, the bottom six feet of a tree. Now around your home, you'd want to maintain five feet clearance from the roof line. So if you're five foot tall and you're walking the perimeter of your roof, nothing should hit you in the head. And then you want to double that to ten feet from the chimney, fences, and roadways. And it's important to note that these requirements are all within 200 feet of any structure or home, regardless if that structure or home is on your property or adjoining properties like your neighbors. So it's those areas that need to be clear in order to limit the spread of fire and to provide the defensible space for us firefighters to safely operate. So simply put, we'll provide the offense if you provide the defense. So here's your basic inspection process. It begins with the owner's self-inspection. So you want to compare your native brush and your landscape vegetation on your property with the information that you're going to find in the mailer and also on the lafd.org/brush website. Now, if you have difficulties and you're not able to do that yourself, you can hire a professional who can both understand the information and then apply it to the property that you own. But you want to clear your property as required prior to May 1st this year. And that way, you're going to pass the fire department's inspection and you'll avoid a $33 noncompliance fee and also a time-consuming second inspection, which comes with a costly $668 noncompliance fee. So it's important to note, too, that there's no need to call for an inspection at any time. You don't need to call for an inspection. We're going to do that automatically. Our computer system tracks all the properties that are due for an inspection. So then we'll have an appropriate inspector. They're going to be notified that your property is due, and they're going to come in and inspect and/or re-inspect if needed. Now for the first inspection. That first inspection is done by us, the fire department, and it is in May 1st, and it continues until June 30th. However, we want people to know that it is a year-round requirement to have brush clearance. And all parcels that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone, they will be initially inspected. Those parcels that are found in violation are going to be issued a notice of violation, and they'll be assessed, and that's when you get that $33 noncompliance fee. Then the homeowner has about 30 days to comply with that notice of violation. And the owner can check the status of their property by registering an account at vms3.lafd.org. So now when we come to the second inspection, that means that you, as a homeowner, were issued a notice of violation on the first inspection. So then you're going to be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if it registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say, there's no need to call the LAFD brush unit when you're ready for your reinspection. That reinspection will be automatically, uh, scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed reinspection, then it's going to be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee, so you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, how can I check the brush status of my own property? Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the status. Now use your APN or the assessor parcel number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often we get asked, well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit? Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's, the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you receive the notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top-right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance, and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next? Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property. And if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense, so you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation, nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LAFD brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you, as the owner, to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's Accounting Services section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees or your invoices or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424, or you could send an email to lafd brushes We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember too that we have limited resources
Calling all music lovers, join Levitt L.A. for 10 free summer concerts at MacArthur Park. Each Saturday in summer, Levitt Pavilion welcomes a new sound to the stage. Enjoy Latin soul, jazz fusion, Afro beats, and the sounds of Central America along with electric rock and punk. Levitt Pavilion is the place to get your global groove on with something for everyone. These free concerts are supported by the City Departments of Cultural Affairs and Recreation and Parks, and are sponsored by Councilmember Unisa Hernandez. See you on the lawn to celebrate music and community each Saturday starting at 7:00 p.m., except July 5th, as there's no show that day. For more information, visit levittlosangeles.org. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a summer of free events with the Valley Cultural Foundation. The Fourth of July Extravaganza celebrates the nation's birthday with a free concert and a dazzling 20-minute fireworks display. There will also be food trucks and vendors on site. Up to 40,000 people can be accommodated for this event, so get there early to claim your spot. The concert on July 4th features Strange Days, A Tribute to the Doors, with other acts scheduled to perform in Warner Park over the next few weeks of summer. For more details on the Fourth of July Extravaganza and other free Warner Park events, check the website, valleycultural.org. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery, LeMAG, presents COLA 2025. This is an exhibition of the city's Department of Cultural Affairs' Independent Master Artist of 2025, who share their creative visions on a wide range of themes. Nine L.A.-based artists in visual, literary, and performing arts will show their works, which include video, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and installation. Head to LeMAG at Barnes-Dahl Art Park for COLA 2025 Visual Artist Exhibition from July 17th to August 30th. For more information on gallery hours, visit lemag.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a number of Know Your Rights resources available online. Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution. And according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency family preparedness, immigration options, rapid response phone numbers for L.A., and the Know Your Rights card. The library's Know Your Rights card is available to everyone online in 23 different languages. For more information, click on the Know Your Rights banner at lapl.org. Mayor Karen Bass announced that resources would be immediately available to support downtown businesses impacted by protests in the city. The mayor's Office for Economic Development, Councilmember Isabel Hurado, and the city's Economic and Workforce Development Department are providing help online. Impacted businesses can join webinars to learn more about assistance, including graffiti removal, legal aid, and employment support. According to Hurado, local businesses are the backbone of downtown L.A., and the council member's office will support them through every challenge. For more, visit mayor.lacity.gov press. Following the devastating wildfires in January, L.A. City's Housing Authority, HACLA, wants to let Angelenos know of a new source of relief for disaster survivors. CAL Assist Mortgage Fund is a new relief program from the state of California, which will support homeowners impacted by disasters between January 2023 and January 2025. The CAL Assist Mortgage Fund will cover eligible homeowners for three months of mortgage payments up to $20,000. Before applying, review the list of qualified disasters for this program, confirm the income limits, and check that your mortgage servicer is participating.
We've got a really scheduled meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here's what's happening in L.A. this week.
This is about all of us. It's about choosing to believe in our
It's about choosing to believe in our city again and proving it with action. And no matter what our city faces, L.A. never, ever gives up.
The number one cause of preventable death after injury is bleeding. Someone who is severely bleeding can bleed to death in as little as five minutes. Minutes count, and your LAFD thanks you for learning how to stop the bleed by following the ABCs. If someone has an injury with blood spreading out of the wound, clothing soaked in blood, bleeding that won't stop, or loss of any part of an arm or leg, you need to act quickly. The first step is A for alert. Have someone call 911. The next step is B for bleeding. Locate the bleeding injury and remove any clothing covering the area so you can see the injury. The final step is C for compress. Use any clean cloth. Apply the dressing directly to the wound and press down hard. Push down on top of the wound with both hands as hard as you can. If blood soaks through the dressing, do not remove it. Add another dressing on top and continue applying steady pressure. Do not release the pressure to check the wound. Keep steady pressure until help arrives.
Hi, I'm Eric Scott, captain and public information officer for the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Often people ask us really, what is brush clearance and why is it important? So simply put, brush fires continue to threaten life and property in the very high fire hazard severity zone. So that means areas that are prone to wildfires. And having brush clearance provides us the defensible space to save those lives and property. So particularly when you're clearing all of those ground fuels or the lower vegetation, that really helps us because it'll present what is called the fire ladder. And that's when the fire starts off low on the ground and it starts to climb upward to where it gets spread by winds. So what you might see is an ember would land on the ground. It would ignite the grass that is there, what we call is light flashy fuel. Then it's going to jump to those lower hanging limbs or those branches and starts to climb up the tree, ignites that heavier fuel, and that just exacerbates the problem. So this requirement does not apply to your healthy fruit trees or privacy hedges or ornamental shrubbery, as long as that's all well-maintained, meaning that it's free of all dead and dry material. Also, people ask, well, what are the basic brush clearance requirements? So your basic requirements are this. You want to trim the weeds and the grass down to three inches. You need to trim the bottom third of a bush, the bottom six feet of a tree. Now around your home, you'd want to maintain five feet clearance from the roof line. So if you're five foot tall and you're walking the perimeter of your roof, nothing should hit you in the head. And then you want to double that to 10 feet from the chimney, fences, and roadways. And it's important to note that these requirements are all within 200 feet of any structure or home, regardless if that structure or home is on your property or adjoining properties like your neighbors. So it's those areas that need to be clear in order to limit the spread of fire and to provide the defensible space for us firefighters to safely operate. So simply put, we'll provide the offense if you provide the defense. So here's your basic inspection process. It begins with the owner's self-inspection. So you want to compare your native brush and your landscape vegetation on your property with the information that you're going to find in the mailer and also on the lafd.org/brush website. Now, if you have difficulties and you're not able to do that yourself, you can hire a professional who can both understand the information and then apply it to the property that you own. But you want to clear your property as required prior to May 1st this year. And that way, you're going to pass the fire department's inspection and you avoid a $33 noncompliance fee and also a time-consuming second inspection, which comes with a costly $668 noncompliance fee. So it's important to note too that there's no need to call for an inspection at any time. You don't need to call for an inspection. We're going to do that automatically. Our computer system tracks all the properties that are due for an inspection. So then we'll have an appropriate inspector. They're going to be notified that your property is due, and they're going to come in and inspect and/or re-inspect if needed. Now for the first inspection. That first inspection is done by us, the fire department, and it is in May 1st, and it continues until June 30th. However, we want people to know that it is a year-round requirement to have brush clearance. And all parcels that are within that very high fire hazard severity zone, they will be initially inspected. Those parcels that are found in violation are going to be issued a notice of violation. And they'll be assessed, and that's when you get that $33 noncompliance fee. Then the homeowner has about 30 days to comply with that notice of violation. And the owner can check the status of their property by registering an account at vms3.lafd.org. So now when we come to the second inspection, that means that you as a homeowner were issued a notice of violation on the first inspection. So then you're going to be inspected a second time after that 30-day period. That gives you that grace period of 30 days to correct the violation. Then owners can check the status of their property again by registering your account at vms3.lafd.org. Now, if the property's not fully in compliance upon initial inspection, that owner is going to be notified via mail or email if you're registered within that website that we mentioned. So it's important to also say there's no need to call the LAFD brush unit when you're ready for your reinspection. That reinspection will be automatically scheduled as appropriate with their timeframes. It's all computerized. So if your property remains in noncompliance after a failed reinspection, then it's going to be cleared by city contractors. And the property owner, or you, will be invoiced a noncompliance fee of $668 plus an administrative fee of $1,498 on top of the contractor's fee. So you certainly want to avoid this. We get asked a lot of questions. Here is your top seven most frequently asked questions and the answers. So number one is, how can I check the brush status of my own property? Again, that's that important website that we're driving home, the vms3.lafd.org. You could register a new brush clearance account there and check the stats. Now use your APN or the assessor parcel number, as well as a PIN, which is your personal identification number. It's going to be printed on the bottom of the owner notification that was mailed to you annually in March. Often we get asked, well, what is the best way to contact the brush unit? Simply put, the best way is to send an email. You send it to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now, if you incorporate your APN and a brief description of the issue or the problem that you would like to discuss, that greatly assists us determining who you are and what the issue is. And then a member of our brush unit will respond to you within 48 hours. Also, you could feel free to call. It's the number is 1-800-994-4444. But we do ask for your patience in advance because it's very busy and there's minimal inspectors, so we have limited resources to take your call. But the office hours are from 7:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. So what if you received a notice of noncompliance in the mail? What are you supposed to do then? Well, start by reading that notice very carefully. Identify the actual violations that were mentioned on your property. See what was cited there. And then you could follow the steps in the frequently asked questions. The first one there, to see photos that was taken by the inspector of your property and where the problem is. Then you want to correct those violations by the due date. So look at that due date. It'll be located at the top right corner of your notice. Here's another question we get. Okay, you were issued a notice of noncompliance, and now you did the right thing. You finished clearing your property of the violations that you were cited. Now what? What's next? Well, truthfully, you don't have to do anything at this point. After the allotted 30-day period, a fire inspector is going to re-inspect your property. And if your property is still in noncompliance, then you get that second notice to abate the fire hazard. That'll be mailed to you. Now, the city will start the process to have your property cleared by a contractor at your expense. So you want to avoid that. Some ask if there is a particular contractor that should be used to clear your property. Well, simply put, the city does not provide a recommendation nor do we endorse any contractor. So really, it's you as the property owner. It's your responsibility to request the current proof of insurance, if they're bonded, if they have a license, and obtain any other relevant information about that contractor. But we do try to help. So there is a brush clearance contractor list on the website. So what do you do if you feel that the inspector is wrong and that your property is in compliance? And can you file an appeal? Well, the answer is yes. Yes, you can. Visit the LAFD brush website to view the detailed inspection process, and that includes appeals. However, note that a failed inspection will subject you as the owner to fees that continue to increase with each failed inspection. All billing is conducted through the city's accounting services section. So if you have questions about that concerning your fees or your invoices or any fees that even could be attached to a tax bill, you should direct those to the source. That's accounting. So you could either call them at 213-978-3424, or you could send an email to lafd brushesaccg@lecity.org. We understand that many people might be worried about their neighbor's property and that they might have a fire hazard because of some overgrown brush. And how would you report that? So first off, we want you to know that the fire department wants to hear your concerns so we can provide the clearance necessary for our firefighters to protect your property and your neighborhood. So you can report a brush fire hazard by email to lafdbrush@lecity.org. Now please make sure that you include the exact location of the brush hazards, the address. If you have the APN, that would be even better. But of course, you need to put a brief description of what the hazards are and where those hazards are on the property. And of course, it's best not to go looking at those hazards on that neighbor's property without permission. You also can make your complaint by phone. That same phone number we provided before to our brush clearance unit is 1-800-994-4444. And again, we welcome your complaint, but remember too that we have limited resources to take your call, and those hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Calling all music lovers, join Levitt L.A. for 10 free summer concerts at MacArthur Park. Each Saturday in summer, Levitt Pavilion welcomes a new sound to the stage. Enjoy Latin soul, jazz fusion, Afro beats, and the sounds of Central America along with electric rock and punk. Levitt Pavilion is the place to get your global groove on with something for everyone. These free concerts are supported by the City Departments of Cultural Affairs and Recreation and Parks, and are sponsored by Councilmember Eunice Hernandez. See you on the lawn to celebrate music and community each Saturday starting at 7:00 p.m., except July 5th, as there's no show that day. except July 5th, as there's no show that day. For more information, visit levittlosangeles.org. Join Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for a summer of free events with the Valley Cultural Foundation. The Fourth of July Extravaganza celebrates the nation's birthday with a free concert and a dazzling 20-minute fireworks display. There will also be food trucks and vendors on site. Up to 40,000 people can be accommodated for this event, so get there early to claim your spot. The concert on July 4th features Strange Days, A Tribute to the Doors, with other acts scheduled to perform in Warner Park over the next few weeks of summer. For more details on the Fourth of July Extravaganza and other free Warner Park events, check the website, valleycultural.org. The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery, Le Mag, presents COLA 2025. This is an exhibition of the city's Department of Cultural Affairs' independent master artists of 2025, who share their creative visions on a wide range of themes. Nine L.A.-based artists in visual literary and performing arts will show their works, which include video, painting, sculpture, photography, drawing, and installation. Head to Le Mag at Barnes-Dahl Art Park for COLA 2025 Visual Artist Exhibition from July 17th to August 30th. For more information on gallery hours, visit lemag.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Every day, over 100 Americans die from secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke in children can cause asthma, ear infections, and increased risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Go to smokefreehomesla.com. Learn how you can protect your home from secondhand smoke.
The Los Angeles Public Library has a number of Know Your Rights resources available online. Everyone in the U.S. is protected by certain rights under the Constitution. And according to the L.A. Public Library, knowing those rights can make a difference. Know Your Rights resources include emergency-
Madam Clerk, we're back in open session. Can you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Blumenfield, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Brahmin, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski, 15 members present in court, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Uh, Mr. President, there's nothing to report out of closed session.
All right. Madam Clerk, what's before us at this time?
Uh, Mr. President, Council should reconsider 118 right now, sir.
All right. Item 118, reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Uh, also, if Mr. Price can be recused from 82 and 111, sir?
All right, Mr. Price is leaving the room, and his name has been removed from the board. So let's take up those items at this time. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Uh, Mr. Price is reconsidered, uh, re- is excused from, um, recused from 112, but that was also called special for comments by Ms. Hernandez, and Mr. Nazarian has questions on 112.
All right, let's take up 112 at this time. If we can track down Mr. Nazarian, but we'll begin by comments, with comments from Councilmember Hernandez. On 112.
Great, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise in full support of the fiscal year 2526 U.L.A. expenditure plan. This is the largest U.L.A. expenditure plan ever. This plan moves more than $424 million into housing justice efforts across the city. This is only possible because revenue continues to grow. Nearly every quarter, U.L.A. brings in more money to make a dent in the housing crisis. The U.L.A. expenditure plan funds 11 programs. These include affordable housing, construction and preservation, homeownership support, eviction prevention, and income support. This is why we were able to pass a right to council for tenants and how we fund the enforcement of the tenant anti-harassment ordinance. Nearly $200 million is going directly into new social housing. And for the first time in two years, the city is releasing a new notice of funding availability. It could be the largest we've ever, we've ever seen at $376 million, with $316 million from U.L.A. alone. The results are already evident. U.L.A. fund, uh, funds have helped advance 795 affordable housing units. Over 10,000 tenants have remained housed thanks to rental assistance. 500 low-income seniors and people with disabilities have received income support. This year's budget includes more than $42 million to sustain and expand the program. The U.L.A. expenditure plan is, uh, is progress that we can measure. And most importantly, it reflects what the voters wanted. These are real investments that sold down the eviction-to-homelessness pipeline. Colleagues, U.L.A. is working. We're keeping people housed, and we're accelerating affordable housing. We have momentum, and I want to see the people's will through, the voters, their will. That's why I'm voting in support of this expenditure plan, and I urge you colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. So Madam Clerk, we'll hold this item on the desk. Mr. Nazarian's in discussion with staff at this moment, so we'll move on with the other items before us.
Okay, uh, if Mr. Price would like to return, there are several items where amendments have been circulated and submitted and public comment has been satisfied. Would Council like to go through those items now, sir?
Yes.
Okay, item 32 is amendment, uh, by Ms. Park, second by Mr. Lee.
All right, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be the amendment on, uh, item 58. And for 58, the amendment has been submitted, and Ms. Hernandez has comments on 58.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll.
Ms. Hernandez, do you still have comments on 58?
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes, thank you. You're gonna hear me three more times. Apologies, thank you so much. Um, thank you, Council President, uh, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise today to speak on item 6, a motion I co-introduced with Councilmembers Soto Martinez and Jurado to fund Phase 1 of a public bank feasibility study. Last month was the last straw. We faced, uh, we were forced to make brutal decisions due to a billion-dollar budget deficit. It exposed the reality of our city's budget. It stretched thin, deeply reactive, and consistently fails to fund the things that Angelenos are demanding, like affordable housing. Tens of millions of public dollars go into the vaults of pu- uh, into the vaults of public, I mean, private banks in the form of interest and fees. Not fix, not into fixing streetlights, not into fixing sidewalks, not into trash pickup, but to line the pockets of Wall Street investors at the expense of hard-working, tax-paying Angelenos. That's what we're up against. A budget process and financial system where we have to fight to protect city jobs and core services while interest payments and settlement checks go out like clockwork. These banks, these private banks are making a lot of money off of us. So yes, I've had enough, um, my colleagues have had enough, and our constituents have had enough. And 58 community organizations are saying we need a public bank ASAP. We're not voting to create a public bank today. This motion allocates a total of $45,000 from our council office discretionary funds to study the implications for the city to hold, manage, and leverage its own money. We're asking this council to approve the transfer of funds into an account that would eventually pay for the study. That's it. It's something that this council has unanimously agreed to explore. So let's put our money where our mouths are and fund the study that will get us answers to questions like, what would it cost to start? What, what could it save over time? And what could this tool, uh, be used to fund in the future? And the future we keep talking about. The answer might be yes. If so, then what excuse would we have to keep doing business as usual? Because business as usual is bleeding our city dry and making, making private bank institutions richer. Thank you to Councilmembers Soto Martinez and Jurado for putting in the work, and to Councilmember Yaroslavski for sending me this motion, and to the Public Bank Los Angeles and the 58 community organizations that push this forward. S.I.U. 721, the L.A. Fed, UTLA, Inclusive Action for the City, Destination Crenshaw, Act L.A., ACE, United Way, and many more. Thank you for refusing to accept crumbs and for pushing us. Also, thank you to my colleagues like Councilmember Blumenfield, who has agreed to put in more resources, um, or we talked about it at least, and he's interested, so thank you for that. So colleagues, the question before us is not whether the Municipal Bank of L.A. is a silver bullet. It's whether this city council is serious about finding a solution to the financial drain that continues to harm the very communities we are elected to serve and continues to make private banks rich. So I respectfully ask for your support on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Yes, appreciate it, Councilmember Hernandez. I wanted to make one correction to what you stated because you said there's 45,000 in there, but with the amendment that we put forward where I'm kicking in 15, there's now 60,000 to make sure that we can get that study done. So thank you for, for all the members for doing it, and, and, uh, that puts enough money in the till to do it.
All right. Any other comments on this item? All right, seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item number 108, and that amendment has been submitted and public comment has been satisfied on 108.
All right, let's open the roll on 108, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item 113. That was amended, and, uh, the amendment has been, also been circulated, and it was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for a separate vote.
All right, we have 113, called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for a separate vote. It has also been amended. The amendment has been seconded and circulated. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll.
Sorry, 113, sorry.
Councilmember Park, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I had real concerns and serious questions about this item in committee. Any allegation of untruthfulness or intimidation should be investigated, and if necessary, fully prosecuted. But that means having a report that is broad enough to look at all actors and all proponents, those who collected signatures for the referendum, as well as those who sought to withdraw those voter signatures. Because we know that engaging in misleading tactics are not unique to one group or one organization or one cause when it comes to this issue. And I know this because I have personally been targeted by misleading smear campaigns by the very group now complaining about this behavior. I voted no on the tourism wage ordinance because I didn't think it was thoughtful, and I didn't think it took into account the economic realities. I also didn't think the time was right. And I was well within my rights to vote the way I did, just like all of you were free to vote the way that you did. Yet in the last month, I heard from dozens of concerned citizens in my council district about a harassing and misleading communication that unite here and their counter-ballot measures pushed out. And I'm gonna quote it today, just like I did in committee. Quote, Tracy Park voted against raising- Guys, can we be quiet in here, please? It's really hard to hear over all the talking.
Please, let's give the speaker their, Speaker the attention.
Thank you, Council President. And I quote-
All right, all right. Sergeants, if you can let us know who's disrupting the meeting, and, and I will issue them their first warning. Councilmember Park.
And I quote, Tracy Park voted against raising the minimum wage for hospitality workers. Now her billionaire corporate allies are collecting signatures to lower the minimum wage. A new complaint alleges paid signature gatherers are using misdirection and misconduct to collect these signatures. Don't sign the petition. Email Tracy Park and tell her to stop this misleading effort to lower the minimum wage. That communication is deceptive and misleading, suggesting that I'm involved in the ballot measure. I have nothing to do with it. No one consulted me about it. No one even asked my opinion about it. And yet, this group is out there suggesting to people that somehow I should stop this, the very same democratic process that they're using. So I take serious issue with this, and I take very serious issue with the deceptive, misleading, and outright dishonest tactics on all sides. That's why I had tried to introduce this amendment in committee, and I'm asking for your support today because any report that's gonna be prepared should look at the actions of the signature gatherers for the referendum and the individuals who are saluting people to withdraw their signatures from the referendum. I ask for your, I vote colleagues, thank you.
All right, any other speakers on this item? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank, thank you. Um, so my apologies because I actually registered, uh, a no, but we're taking the amendment first, correct?
Uh, there has no, uh, yes, there's gonna be the vote on the amendment first, and then the matter itself, uh, depending on, on the outcome of the amendment.
Of the amendment vote, right. Then we'll take the, the overall item. So I thought we were, I missed the amendment, so if we could just clear the board for a new vote from, uh, because I actually-
All right, do we, do we take a vote on anything on this item?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It was, uh, a vote has not been taken because, uh, Councilmember Park was giving her comments, so.
No, I understand, but I accidentally hit my no vote, that's why I was-
Okay, uh, Mr. Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you so much for bringing this amendment forward, Ms. Park. Uh, I know we had a discussion in committee about this very issue. No amendment was presented at that moment, and if it was written as this, I would have supported it because I don't think there's anything wrong with what you're trying to do. But I also want to just clarify a couple of things. Elected officials, we signed up to be mistreated and tarred and feathered by the press and the public. That is part of our job. There have been plenty of things that have been said about me that have been misleading and I didn't agree with, but I didn't bring it into this chamber. Second of all, the reports that have been, that have been brought forward are about people being assaulted, people being lied to, people being mistreated, and they've been documented, recorded through testimony, through video, and many other things. So, I just want to sort of make a distinction between those two things. Politicians, when we, when we run for office, we sign up for that, whether you like it or not. But the people out there in the street getting assaulted because they're trying to bring information to the public, they didn't sign up for that. And so, I'm supportive of your amendment, but I also want to make that clear distinction. There are, these are two very different issues that we're talking about. But again, I was supportive and I hope folks will support it as well.
All right. I got Councilmember Hernandez and I got, Councilmember Rodriguez on the board. Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, colleagues. Uh, I understand, um, the concerns that are coming out of the signature gathering, but I will say that it feels like the energy perhaps is misplaced. You know, these signature gathers, um, are working for entities, some of them very rich entities. And so, if there's gonna be accountability, um, I think it should be with, with those entities instead of the individuals that are on the ground doing the work. I literally was at the farmer's market a few weeks ago. Someone was collecting signatures against the wage increase. They had no idea what it was about. They were just gathering signatures and so, instead of trying to, um, put all of the weight of repercussions on these signature gathers, I think the accountability needs to be redirected to the folks who are actually paying people to be out there.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Hernandez, actually, for, uh, bringing some kind of calm and, you know, thought to this conversation. To be clear, I didn't sign up to be assaulted or abused. Uh, I signed up to be a public servant. Many of us did, so I wanted to just clarify that record. But, you know, when it comes to ballot measures and everything that's happening, of all the things, to be honest, anyone who is assaulted, doesn't matter what you do, whether it's being pursued by a federal agent or whether it's being pursued by a false actor of a federal agent, that's what I want LAPD's time to be invested in doing, is pursuing individuals that are engaged in assault, in criminal activity. And I think this idea that's trying to assign blame to one side or another is kind of futile given the demands of what we need LAPD to be focused on, but I think, you know, performative politics is the name of the game these days. So, again, I don't, you know, I, I support Ms. Park's amendment for the sake of balance, uh, but to be honest, such all, such a joke. Everyone needs to grow the hell up and voters need to be educated on what they're signing, number one, because I've seen exploitive tactics all the way around and it's wrong. But apparently, that's what everyone feels comfortable to deduce themselves to at this juncture. And it's sad because frankly, whether it's happening at the federal level or the local level, it's all wrong. But we need the adults in the room to show up and what we need our law enforcement officers to be involved in is doing the work of protecting our communities based on the egregious acts that are happening, frankly, at all fronts.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. And I'll, I'll just add to this. I will, uh, support Councilmember Park's amendment, uh, but I would say this about all of it. Everybody in this city who claims to care about this city, next election cycle, you need to be focused on the national congressional elections. We do not need to blow any resources fighting with each other amongst ourselves. And so, that is my editorial comment about all of it. Uh, and with that, I'll ask the clerk to open the roll on this item as amended, or can we?
Um, I, I think it is best, Mr. President, to take a vote on the amendment itself and then.
But the maker of the motion is supportive of the amendment.
Um, okay. Uh, then the item can be voted on as, in one vote.
The maker of the motion supports the amendment, so we can vote on it as amended.
Uh, Mr. President, I was told if there is an objection on the floor, it can't.
Is there an objection on the floor? Besides Mr. Spindler?
Okay. Then it appears not so, so it can, uh, this item can be voted, uh, and recap again, one thirteen, uh, as amended.
All right. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate to vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
All right. What's next?
Uh, one last roll vote can be taken, uh, for amendment, but Mr. Price was recused and that would be item eighty-one. Uh, Mr. Price, you requested recusal on eighty-one. The amendment for this has been circulated.
All right. So, Mr. Price is leaving the room again and his name is coming off the board. So, let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right.
Uh, and now council may, uh, vote on the findings for special one A, correct?
All right. Let's open the roll. Close the roll.
Fourteen ayes.
All right.
And now council may go into public comment, sir.
All right. We had the earlier item that, uh, Council District Two had questions on. Are you ready to proceed with that item, Mr. Nazarian?
This was item one twelve, I believe, and I just left the meeting in the back. My questions have been answered, so thank you.
So, could we, can we proceed for a vote? You're fine for that?
Please.
Just a moment. Uh, Mr. Price is recused, so he has to leave the room again.
All right. Mr. Price, uh, recused, so we'll take his name off the board and he'll remain out of the room. All right. Let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. What's next?
Now council can go into public comment, sir.
All right. I got Mr. Soto Martinez. You're on the board for something? No? Okay. All right. That's, uh, Madam Clerk, Madam City Attorney, if you can send us, uh, the instructions for closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, sorry. Confused. For public comment, which we will take for one hour, so that puts us at, uh, one twenty-eight, that we will close a public comment for this meeting.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic or if we cannot tell whether you're on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not so, do so, or you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment today are items one through eleven, one sixteen to one twenty-two, one twenty-four to one fifty-one. Again, that's items one through eleven, one sixteen to one twenty-two, one twenty-four to one fifty-one. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment, which will be held at, which you can give at the end of your agenda item comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. Which items would you like to speak to today?
Yes, good afternoon. All items and general public comment, as well as the special item. Don't forget the special.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
So, we have an item, uh, actually, before I talk, uh, I, I just want to make sure that, uh, Councilwoman Marquisi, you know, it's not my fault that you have snitches on your staff, so please don't blame me for that. Uh, blame your staffers for that. Moving on, we have an item on parking meters, right? Parking meters and increasing the rates of parking meters. Well, let's talk about the rates of parking meters and where parking meters should actually be established. Wouldn't you know it, over on Elron Hubbard Way, there's actually no parking meters and it's illegal for the cult of Scientology to do that and the city is losing money over it. We have a lot of new faces here and they should know that the city is losing millions of dollars for not installing parking meters over on Elron Hubbard Way, where the big blue building is Scientology. I know a lot of people here who use TikTok know quite a bit about Scientology and I'm sure many of you probably have seen William Goo and other people, but this is actually a legitimate motion on the agenda right now that the city is deliberately choosing not to install parking meters over there because they do sweetheart deals with the city so they get shady money under the table as cuts in order to continue prosecuting people that dare criticize Scientology and all their manner of political shenanigans. Now, we're gonna move on to yet another agenda item and it's actually relating to the Brown Act violations for having law enforcement officers in closed session. In closed session, the only people allowed are the staffers themselves and the council members and the city attorney deputies. Why is it that law enforcement officers are present in your closed sessions? Well, how do you think I get so many of the other snitches as well, including the staffers? You're not supposed to have law enforcement officers inside closed sessions. It's only supposed to be the staffers, the council members, and the deputies over at the city attorney's office. This is why this entire body has so many issues with snitches front, left, right, and center and you have yourselves to blame for it. But, you know, I'm glad. But hey, at least you guys don't get any cut of that money that they sell over to KTLA Five, myself, uh, probably even Auto L.A. and even Shrimp, you know, even a Bike Guy. Poor Bike Guy has to get in on the, on the cut too. We're gonna move on here to, um, another interesting topic as to the special item that I know they're not gonna give me time for, but I'm gonna make sure I get it out anyway. The reason why they had closed session is because they had to retain the Covington firm because the city's under various criminal investigations by the DOJ for the various felonies they commit by laundering money from the homelessness programs, by having their little nest eggs at their various nonprofits, that once they leave being a council member, they have that cushion to fall back on. And it's fine that seventy-two people a week minimum on Skid Row alone are dying a week because they still get their cut of the money. It's fine that at least seventy, uh, seven people a day are dying right now as we speak in this air-conditioned room because all the homelessness fraud programs are supposed to actually help people, are actually not helping people at all. It's fine because they get their cut of it and it's fine that we keep ignoring the homelessness issue. Moving on to my general public comment at this point. So, the beautiful part about general public comment is we can just sort of riff on anything we want, right? And I'm here today to riff on the fact that, first of all, Hugo finally answered a question yesterday in front of William Goo, the first time Hugo's ever dared look any reporter in the eye in a very long time. Hugo actually ran in the middle of traffic and would much rather have offed himself from a car coming onto him in incoming traffic than answer a simple question. That's the kind of person that Hugo is. That's what he thinks, uh, leadership constitutes and this is what you can expect out of city council. This is an entire clown show. I know some of you actually believe in this crap, but this is a whole clown show. You have an indicted current price for felony fraud. You have Weezer, yet another council member that went down on fraud. You have at least two others that are gonna come down on felony charges and you have Padilla that literally said to the police chief, hey, can you give me advance notice when the feds are gonna raid my house for all the felonies I've committed? I mean, this is the kind of shit that you can expect out of city council and you better take the comment on special agenda item because I know you're gonna try to bullshit your way out of that one.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Sorry.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Number eighty.
Okay. Number eighty has, uh, not available for public comment, but you can speak to it in general public comment, so you'll have one minute.
Okay. My name is Kelsey Mangan. I am with the Rent Brigade and I am a tenant in Council District Eleven, speaking on agenda item number eighty. Please vote yes on the permanent ordinance to end rent evictions. The recent wildfires worsened and a severely limited housing market. We were already dealing with an eviction crisis and hundreds of people have been displaced due to renovation work. Rent eviction is an urgent problem that the city council unanimously voted to put an end to with a temporary ordinance. City council must adopt a permanent ordinance today to ensure people are safe in their homes and protected by this ordinance. I have lived in Los Angeles for thirteen years and I love my community. There's no reason me or my neighbors should lose our homes to renovation work. This allows landlords to evict loyal tenants and rent them for more money, which will drive up broader rent and only worsen this housing crisis. Please vote in support of the ordinance today to stop landlords from exploiting this loophole. Thank you.
Prohibition of the use of the N-word and the C-word epithet. Now, what does that mean in English, Mr. Dogson? Mr. Dogson, the DOJ and the government want to know why you are suppressing the C-word, spelled C, and followed by a U, like you, and an N, like you, and a T for terrific for Trump. The reason behind this non-vulgar viewpoint, as you see, we got a yellow-white caps here, like me, a white nigger too, talking about speaker time to speak for the remainder of the meeting. Well, I'm literally practicing this because it's a pattern and practice of government suppressing your free speech as white niggers too and your free speech of white niggers too, like me, a white nigger too.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
Oh, I, I don't get to finish the N-word? All right. I'll go to the next item. Now, regarding what David O. Carter said just the other day regarding shelters, free rent, rationsable living, and asshole taxpayers like you that pay taxes to these stupid assholes, dumbass, to understand is that ramen noodle, noodle 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 noodle, I'm on number one thirty-five, Ms. Attorney, for the record. Fuck you. Thank you. Um, regarding Maholand Drive, the only thing you can drive in Maholand is this into the Constitution. Donald Trump hates you. You're all going to hell. So, then I go into, uh, one thirty-eight where that dickhead Hernandez and Juarte are talking about city neighborhoods, emergency increase. Well, smoke and scan, and I already know the problem. We're being smoked and scammed by ninety thousand dollars in District One when we should be voting for Mr. Spindler and not the interruption by the Gucci bag lady, Imelda, the union worker, under David Jose Huerta and that other bitch who sent her, her, her staff to try to kill a police officer, Ms. Juarte there. Thank you for the interruption. Now, let me go into the other enlightening words of lightning because I'm a white nigger too, for the record. I am heartbroken that you, Bob Blumenfield, and you, uh, is your name Padilla? Where's your little chongo? The Gucci bag? You didn't bring them today. Too bad. Now, into my non-agenda public comment. Forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three, the Bay Act fifty-two, one forty-two, fuck local government in the name of Donald Trump, who saved the fucking LAPD from all the riots and the name of Bondi, who will soon sue the government of Los Angeles for your fucked-up sanctuary cities, stealing public money, stealing taxpayers' money, and only one white nigger like me has the RNC on his side. So, when you wanna vote Democrat, think of your housing situation. Think of your rent situation. Think of how you're living in this fucked-up city of Los Angeles with all those boarded windows, with all that illegal shit going on because illegal is illegal! And closing argument. And closing argument, smoking scan, you're right, the attorney wears a mask, what a fucking cunt. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Danielle McCus, Emily Filkin, and Sonia Desay-Damel.
All items and general comment. So, number 140, it's the end of rap music, everybody. Today, we are gonna ban one of the worst words in the English language that starts with an N and ends with an R. Thank goodness, this was my plan all along. I sit in my home in Jewish Israel, in Encino, and out of the windows of young men come rap lyrics in the morning, blasting filthy anti-Semitic remarks, using the N-word, using the F-word, disturbing my community and targeting me racially as a white man. So today, we are gonna ban the use of N-word rap music in this city, and if anybody blares it out, we'll be arrested on sight. Let's give Unissa a hand for her motion. Because if a white man can't say a word that starts with an N, a black man can't either. And now, we get into the other agendas. We have a couple of liquor licenses today, one in Tracy Park's district, and the other on over there in Monique Al Rodriguez's district. And of course, Monique Al and Little Miss Park over there are more interested in selling alcohol and having men get drunk and beat their wives and kids instead of protecting public safety. If you're gonna protect public safety, you two lunatic hoes, why don't you ban liquor licenses in the city for one straight year? We are oversaturated with alcohol. Everywhere I go, Bob, there's alcohol. When I pick up a prostitute on 77th and Fig, there's alcohol. When I go home, there's alcohol. Alcohol everywhere. Fuck alcohol. And then, we talk about the fiscal emergency. We are in a crisis. We are missing $2 billion of stolen homeless funds, but I have good news, Marquezzi knows where the money is, and the star witness, everybody, is gonna be Matt Zabo to testify against the council members and send them to prison. Let's give Matt Zabo a hand. Now, you see, the fourth floor, everybody, they got it on lockdown.
You can't go up to the council offices anymore and ask the city services, especially Imelda Padilla, who locked down her council office because she's afraid of what?
FBI.
And why are you afraid of the FBI?
Because I'm a criminal, allegedly.
That's right. So, I say, go get 'em, FBI, go get 'em.
And now, for the general comment, as Marquezzi knows, when I was leaving his council chambers Friday, Imelda waved a finger at me and said something about my deceased mother in Spanish. Now, you have to understand here that my mother was a goddamn fucking hoe. She fucked every black man over in the West Hills, the back.
This is not, this is not within the purview of the city of Los Angeles. I'll ask you to get on a topic germane to the Los Angeles City Council, or sit down.
Would you let me talk? If you're gonna take and attack somebody's family, they have a right to retort, right?
All right, Madam City Attorney, this speaker's off topic.
Isn't it true, doesn't a city council member have a right to criticize people?
Speaker, you need to speak to something within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body, otherwise you can forfeit your time.
Okay, so simply put, as we say in the Sicilians, a fool a gots. In other words, you dumb bitch, fix my streetlights over in Baynac.
Y'all already know who I am. Hello, Mr. President. I'll tell you, I'm very impressed with Hernandez and also Hugo for doing the things they're doing for my progress. People like that, it's nonsense. This land is not theirs. This is, this is built, this building right here is built by slaves and also people from other countries, even the walls. I don't know what nonsense, I've heard so much nonsense, racist stuff, today out there from this lady, that man that just finished talking, and that other idiot. This is not a circus, this, we are people. We bleed, we love each other, this is God's land. This is not a white land, this is Jesus' land. He made it for the people. Sir, I hope you make a law against people like that, because people like that need a law when they're insulting people and talking like that about people, that people can hear it, because it's not right. People, if they got a, a law for everything else, they should have a law for discrimination like that, because people like that shouldn't be around of people that do good like Ms. Hernandez and Hugo.
All items on our 154-page-long agenda.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
116, 116.
Hold on one second, Councilmember Hernandez.
Council President, it's too loud, I can't hear the public comment.
All right, we'll ask everyone in the gallery to quiet down so that we can hear the speakers as they come forward. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah, if you can.
Also, those of us around the horseshoe, if we can be mindful of our volume as their conversations.
If you can instruct your staffers, that'd be really helpful.
Hold on, I'll call on you when it's your time to come back. So, everyone around the horseshoe can be mindful, we got a lot of people in here, the acoustic in this room makes your voices carry, so we'll ask everybody in the horseshoe, around the horseshoe, and in the gallery to be mindful. Thank you.
So, we know that the council president's starting to rush this agenda so he can go on vacation, we know his job is very hard, and we know how amendments get voted on. Anyways, emergency. We're glad that it's a longer June, we're glad that all of you feel really proud, and while you were doing the most performative things by putting our lights and hanging our flags, the city was being raided. Immigrant communities, trans communities, folks that continue to build this city unlike the rest of you were being raided. So, I'm glad that all of you felt really, really, really proud during June. What you can actually do, Council President, instead of just declaring an emergency, you can set forth a rent eviction protection, you can set forth providing a safety net for these individuals, and you can definitely set forth advancing an equity investment in transgender expansive and intersex communities. Yet, the CEO, CAO was really quick to commission a report on how not only did we need to pay the police, the police overtime for beating on the, beating on the protesters, not knowing how they're doing, making up rules like they do during this meeting. The council president's staff refuses to ever come out, not Maurice, not your chief of staff, not you. So, you can, so you cannot let, you cannot hide under LAPD on how to run these meetings. Item number 122, again, more funding for the LAPD, more transsexual funds, so again, you can continue to run this city broke, you can continue to make sure that we continue to pay out time and time again all the abuse and, and, and access to use of force by the LAPD. Item number 134, um, again, instead of funding, putting more money to pay for the lights, we ask that the city council set forth an initiative, a motion like the state did, like the county did, that is truly investing in the, in our, in the lives of our people, and not just continue to criminalize us and create an LAPD force that is gonna continue to lead the city to be broke. Item number, lastly, item number 144, again, we need a report back from the LAPD, we do know that the LAPD is working with ICE, all of the council members know that, that's why Officer Tracy here is afraid. I don't know why you're afraid, you're constantly walking around with a whole gang of LAPD officers around you, so I'm pretty sure all the protests are gonna get to you. At any rate, we would love to be able to make sure that this city council moves forward, you have one more day, that's the reason why you're rushing everything to tomorrow, and you will continue to see the chaos, the circus, not even Tracy can bring the decent white people that wanna make Venice white, even though it was never white, from the West Side here, not even they can say quietly in this meeting, look at the joke that you create, and this is all being led by the joke of a council president that is Marquez here, Dawson, so I cannot wait for you to get indicted like all your predecessors have got voted out of office. Do I get another minute for public, general public comment? 'Cause I can keep going. Great, general public comment. Thank you to the offices of this body that are invested in working with us, making sure that the community is able to lead a budget advocacy, is able to lead policy procedures that isn't just training for the LAPD, so they can continue to murder people like Linda Becerra and any trans person, any black person, any homeless person, any homeless person that they continue to see. So, we look forward to working with every single council office, ideally nine or 10 of you, because we know the five offices are trash, they're never gonna move. And more importantly, I know Monica's out doing something, but, Councilmember Padilla, podemos ir a la pelea y decir lo que vamos a hacer por el pueblo. Este concilio, este cuerpo puede invertir en nuestra comunidad y no solamente ponerse enfrente de las cámaras y decir, oh, lástima que ICE no podemos controlar nada. So, do your job, you can do this, and we look forward to all your staffers actually listening, and not just continue to ignore the public just because Marquez leads by example. Thank you.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Agenda item 80.
You can get one minute of general public comment to speak to item 80.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Dani. I was born in LA at Cedar Sinai, my mother was born at Cedar Sinai, my sisters and I have been raised by communities across LA, and we're a family of renters. When they ask me about my work, I could use jargon, like I work in equitable building decarbonization, but instead, I explain that I'm working to get renters good air conditioning to withstand these longer heat waves or necessary housing repairs to reduce their utility bills and improve their health. The biggest response I get is, won't those upgrades increase my rent or put me at risk of eviction? Tenants should not have to choose between housing quality or housing stability, this is a false choice. Councilmembers, you have the power today to challenge this false choice, you have the power today to achieve a major win across both housing and climate. Please vote in support of the permanent ordinance to end rent evictions. Thank you.
All right, good morning, let's start with item number one, item number one. Let's move on to item number 140. Uh, number, item, uh, uh, number 140 is, uh, seems like we are trying to ban some words. Uh, so, thank you very much, Council President Smoking Scan. Now, I want to ask our council member, uh, Council President Smoking Scan, am I allowed to use the word smoking scan? Uh, am I allowed to use the word, uh, Dana? Am I allowed to use the word Big Amy? I'm not allowed to say the word Audit L.A., because right now, the council president trying to ban one word, tomorrow, they're gonna ban two word, next year, they're gonna ban 10 word, eventually, they're gonna ban every single English word right there. It seems like our city attorney is doing a great job on violating the First Amendment rights. So, I am here to shout out to our Smoking Scan, to make sure you are, everybody, every one of your family members and chat groups are informed that we are no longer allowed to use some words. Continue, that I heard a lot of blacks are using the word every single day on the train, on the bus, on the hallway, on the street, just because they are blacks, so they have a special privilege? So, just because they are blacks, so they are allowed to have a special rights? So, just because they are blacks, just so, so they have a special rights over any other Caucasian? So, because I am a Caucasian, so that means I don't have a special privilege? So, I thought that, I thought that was, we are no longer in the segregation, I thought white slavery is no longer allowed, I thought white slavery is no longer permitted under the law. But right now, somehow, just because you are black, you have allowed, you are, you will be afforded the First Amendment rights, just because you are white, you are no longer afford the First Amendment rights. I want to say thank you very much, city attorney, and I will never give up my First Amendment and Second Amendment rights, thank you very much, Council President Smoking Scan, I will continue to be here, uh, no matter how many times they use LAPD to arrest me.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Nicholas Cabeza, Zach Goldberg, Jan Fukuhara, Eliza Valencia, and Stacy Segarra-Bullinger.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Good afternoon, Council President and members of the city council, I'm Nicholas Cabeza, speaking on item number 97.
Okay, you'll have one minute for general public comment, 'cause public comment has been held on that item already.
Got it, thank you. Many cities have ordinances regulating, limiting, or banning short-term rentals. However, enforcing these ordinances is often difficult. Short-term rental platforms do not display the addresses of properties on their listings, making it nearly impossible a Taufa unit is legally licensed, or whether platforms are collecting and remitting the correct transit occupancy taxes. SB 346 will level the playing field by providing local governments with the physical addresses of each short-term rental, enhancing audit capability over TOT and ensuring the correct amount of TOTs being collected and remitted, uh, to local governments. With major events taking place right now here in Los Angeles over the next few years, I encourage you to support item number 97 to ensure the correct amount of TOTs being collected. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
I'll just say all items and general public comment.
You'll have three minutes for the items, one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Um, 116 and 117 are both extensions of emergency orders, one relating to the fires, um, and one relating to what's sort of being described in the, the agenda as stuff like vandalism, looting, uh, but I think the real emergency is the way the LAPD are treating demonstrators, and we've already paid out close to $1 billion in liabilities since 2020, that's gonna cause the city a lot more liabilities, maybe you should address that in this extension of an emergency ordinance. Items 124 and 125 are lighting up City Hall and ceremonies and all this bullshit for LGBTQIA community and for the Americans with Disabilities Act. Um, I, as a queer person, obviously, I support the LGBTQIA community, and as an advocate, I support disabilities, but what's bullshit about it is you do these ceremonial things, you throw $400 at lights, um, but you're not actually making any tangible steps to improve the lives of those people. Members of the LGBTQIA community are twice as likely than the rest of the population to become homeless. At least 31% of the unhoused resident population have some sort of disability. So, instead of spending $438 of taxpayer money on some bullshit lights that don't mean anything, maybe put that funding towards something that actually helps these populations. Item 122 is $165,000 to be taken out of the general fund to fund, um, the LAPD. Item 122 is $165,000 to be taken out of the general fund to fund the LAPD further. The LAPD got over 40% of our budget in the most recent fiscal year, for this fiscal year we just started. Also, was negotiated to hire the positions that originally you voted to remove in the initial budget. So it's bullshit that you can't just let their department work out those things themselves. Item 140. C is for counsel and their corruption. U is for undermining the First Amendment and the Brown Act while our city is declining. N is for now is not a good time to attack freedom of speech. T is for tragedy, the people are enduring in your failure to lead. Anybody catch what that spelled out? I think it's bullshit that you're prioritizing things that because your ears are offended, you're so weak, you have to curb freedom of speech for everyone. And you know for a fact, this is gonna bring lawsuits. It's bullshit that Councilmember Rahmon seconded this motion, considering she's used the threat of liabilities and lawsuits in the past to justify going against the wishes of her constituents. But in this case, Marquise Harris Dawson says he can't wait to get in front of a judge, which means he's anticipating lawsuits. This is an attack on free speech. Counsel, you're about to go on recess, but first you got some business to do. 150 items for us to assess, a big agenda to hurry through. Nithya Rahmon once said she wants accessibility for people to address their government. It's about time you challenged Marquise to reinstate remote comment. Vice Chair of the Rules Committee, you've got the power to do something. And I know that you're full of lies, but it's not too late to keep your promises. Bring back remote comment. A lot of people are here. You should be going way past an hour for comments today. And if any of you don't stand up for the people and ask your president to extend public comment today, you're a little bitch.
My turn.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, I'd like to speak to everything and public comment, please.
Okay, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please start with the items.
Thank you. I absolutely will stand here, and for the record, I detest the N-word. I hate hearing it. I hate hearing it here. I hate, even when I listen to rap music, which I like rap music, I will not say it. I won't sing it, and I don't even want to hear it from the rappers. I wish the word would go away completely. Like, that's my thought. But you're picking which words, okay, to ban. What about slur words on Latinos or LGBT? Or, you know, okay, you covered the woman one with the C-word, but you're picking and choosing which words we can, you know, people can or cannot speak. And I think that's a little disingenuous, sir, and counsel, and you know what? But I'm not for you banning any words, okay? Because I don't think it's your job, okay? There's a thing called free speech, and even unpopular speech or speech we don't like or that we detest, which I detest it, okay? And I make it very clear, and I let everyone, you know, I detest it. But what I detest more is for you to sit there and vote on what we can say or not say, okay? I don't like it. It's called the First Amendment for a reason, and you can laugh, sir, it's okay.
Speaker, you should move on to your next agenda item.
All right, the next agenda item is, I agree with you, I don't want to see ICE in schools, okay? I don't think any, I would like, as a mom, I'd be terrified thinking that, you know, someone could come in the schools, okay? That terrifies me. But one thing I'm curious about is, you know, ICE is coming in, you know, in the neighborhoods, whatever, but there's a big blue building that I've been warning you guys about, that, you know, they have people that they traffic here, Scientology, they hold their credentials and their visas, so they cannot leave, okay? And you know what? Maybe someone there would like to be rescued or whatever, but you're not, you know, like, you're just picking and choosing, you don't want to help anybody that may want help. So that's a little disingenuous, too. So no, I don't want them doing it, and I don't want people who want to be here to be, you know, like, you don't have to go terrorize neighborhoods, but what if there's people who have said that they've been trafficked and they had their things, their credentials withheld? I have a friend that was in that situation, could not leave, you know, and, but you're not gonna go check them, because you guys are owned by Scientology.
Speaker, you should move on to another topic.
Okay, next one. Bounty hunters not identifying themselves. You know what? I think that's crap, too. I think every law enforcement should have to identify themselves. I think every public official should have to identify themselves, because how else you gonna, I had a cop, the ones that wouldn't identify themselves, and how do you file a complaint, okay? People need to be able to be identified, everybody, everyone should be able to be identified. And, you know, and that's just a fact. And also, when it comes to the parking, all right, I say, no, don't increase it until you put parking meters on L. Ron Hubbard Way. Why do they get special favor, okay? Public comment. I want to shout out to Smoke and Scan, and I'm like curious, I can't wait to see all the nonsense that has happened here today and all the nonsense that's going on, and he put it for the very last day. I've been coming here for a long time. I've been talking about, you know, the different abuses of Scientology, and Mr. Hugo says, oh, we're here to take the abuses of the people, that's what we get paid to do, we're hired to, you know, no, you're not hired to take our abuse, you're hired to work for us. You're hired to do your job, you're all hired to listen, you're supposed to be listening, you don't, except for Mr. McCosker, he's the only one that's, well, he's not listening now, that big fail, Mr. McCosker. But you know what? That's what you're paid to do, okay? That's what you're hired to do, to do your jobs, okay? And you, guys have been failing miserably on so many levels, so no, and that's why you're getting so much hate in return, I get it. But no, I've come here a lot saying about, you know, you're gonna be hearing a lot more about the slave labor, okay? People are making slave labor in America, and you don't care. Thank you.
I would like to call up Shrimp E. Alvers, Esmeralda Negrete, and Jovan Houston.
Good afternoon. My name is Jan Fukuhara. I was also called, but before I begin, I really do want to thank the president, council members, and my particular council member for having the patience, fortitude, and stamina to actually survive this on a daily basis. I thank you for that as an owner, resident, stakeholder, and volder. So as said, my name is Jan Fukuhara, and I am speaking on number eight agenda item for the conversion of the bid to a property from a merchant-based one. I also am representing a lot of the Little Tokyo seniors. We are very concerned, as you well know, about everything that has happened in the last few weeks. We are very concerned about our personal safety and security, and having a bid conversion would actually help make that happen because of the increased funding and security for Little Tokyo. And that's what I will say now, because I know my time is running out. I have made these comments in public forum before, but I thank you again for your time, consideration, patience, fortitude, and support, and I hope that you vote to approve this and adopt this for the bid conversion for Little Tokyo to property-based. Thank you.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
113. I'm general public comment.
You'll have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please start with the item.
Okay, hello. My name is Jovan Houston. After fighting two years to improve my health care, it was taken from me by greedy corporations. Today, we should be celebrating to improve our health care and the living wage ordinance, but now it's delayed. These signature gatherers intimidated us and act violently against us, and they lied to Los Angeles voters. We demand and urge the city clerk to invalidate the petition and overturn the Olympic wage. We need this. We should not have to fight as hard as we do to get a decent wage here in Los Angeles. We are the essential workers of Los Angeles. We make airports run. We make hotels run. We are the workers. Please, stop the delays, stop the shenanigans. We need this. We should not have to wait any longer. We shouldn't have to fight physically for this. You city council members, please do what's right for the workers and the working-class people of Los Angeles, because we make the city run. Thank you.
I would like to call up Steph Arbe, Jay Goff, Ellie Byron, and Sage Marcos.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment, as well as item 116, item 117, item 118, item 119, item 121.
Okay, you'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Oh, my bad, y'all don't want to hear all the items, but that y'all put it in the agenda, that's kind of cute. It's really a shame how you guys want to act like you're adults and you're the big people in the room when you can't even be in your seats during public comment, you know? That's really a shame. So we have all these settlements all over, and it really makes you wonder how you could cram millions and millions and millions and millions and meals and mills and all the fucking way you could say it, in between like dozens and dozens and dozens of items for the last day of council business at the end of a season, pretty much. It's pretty much like the season finale of city council. They'll come back from recess after a while, when they go, you know, someone probably goes south of the border, someone will go north of the border, you know, there's a lot of Canadians in LA, they might visit some friends. But they're not gonna be here. We learned that from our mayor, that when it's time to do council business, they'll be outside of the city, and then they'll call up and be like, oh, I had no idea there were problems, as if everyone in the city doesn't know there's problems. These hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of settlements per item is clearly evidence of this. The city is excited about going to court. They love it, and the system loves it even more. That's why there's a ever, a never-ending supply of court cases to go through. There's a backlog the size of maybe two of these agendas of cases, because this agenda, you know, I don't know if anybody can see this on the camera, it's about the size of a fucking textbook, and it's just paper, it's not even a cover on this. But they did print it in color, which was nice. I believe there's an item about censorship. This council doesn't like naughty words. It's really disgusting how they can just come up here and act like they can tell us what we can and cannot say. This is what the government, this is what anybody really does to you when you're gonna be screaming about something, is that they put tape over your mouth and they call what you're saying violence. It's just, I'm saying I'm a bunch, I feel like an idiot, but y'all aren't listening anyway, so who the fuck cares? But the N-word and the C-word, I mean, what are we doing here? Y'all are a bunch of cunts. You know what's cunty behavior? Going up in front of a bunch of people that pay you over 200 grand a year, a combined total of a million fucking plus dollars, basically, once you take into account all your little gifts and stuff on the side. And you go up there and you do the most craziest things. We had Tracy Park up here complaining about people criticizing her, that was the most unshit, unhinged shit I've ever seen. And, you know, we're allowed to call y'all cunts, you know, because that's where y'all are. You take our money, make it disappear, tell us to shut the fuck up and deal with it, and act like you're giving us any options here. You're lucky, in the US, they used to do a lot worse than call you a cunt when you showered the public in grievances. You know, it's really a shame.
I would like to call up Kathleen Higashiama, Gee Northway, Julian Alexander-McCarra, and Steve Alexander.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Esperanza Montes. Soy miembro de Unión Here Local 11.
Hi, my name is Esperanza Montes, and I'm a member of Unite Here Local 11. Tengo cinco años trabajando en Flying Food Group como lavaplatos para vuelos internacionales de LAX. I've been working for the last five years in Flying Food Group as a dishwasher for international flights going out of LAX. I was depending on the Olympic salary, Olympic wage. And as the only person that is bringing in income for my home, I wanted to be able to get ahead. And be able to buy medication for my husband, my sick husband, that can no longer work. I'm here because this is extremely important. I've been up all night. I haven't slept at all. I left work. At 7:00 AM this morning. And I came straight here. I came here so that you could hear me and listen to me. And for you to join us and support us in this fight. Please, council members. Ask the, ask the, the city clerk to invalidate. The referendum to overturn the Olympic wage. And support motion for item 113 from council member Soto Martinez. Thank you to everyone for listening.
Speaker, which item would you like to speak to?
Hi, my name's Kathleen Higashiama, and I'd like to speak to item 84 for Foliero Square.
Okay, item 84. You can speak to a general public comment, you'll have one minute.
Okay, my name is Kathleen Higashiama, and I am the granddaughter of Antonio Foliero, of Foliero's Pizza, and the daughter of Teresa Foliero. And I just want to extend a very heartfelt thank you to council member Hernandez and Wendy Castro, who's one of the kindest and most organized people I've ever met, the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council with Darren Gold at the helm, who's just been incredibly supportive, and our incredible community who supported my family's small business since 1968. Foliero Square would be just such a beautiful way to honor the work of my grandfather and my mother and our Foliero staff and our incredibly supportive community. And our small business is just a symbol of hard work and tradition and community, and we look forward to continuing the Foliero's legacy in Historic Highland Park for many years to come. So thank you so much.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
General comment, please.
You'll have one minute.
Hello, my name's Julian McCarra. I'm here to speak in solidarity for all those affected by the turbulence of 2025. Our nation is being divided as we meet. Massed armed men are kidnapping members of our community, family members of this very audience as we speak, all the while still uncovered from the fires. The community looks to you for leadership. The community is currently taking the load. We see no cohesion to correct the police for aiding federal agents, nor demanding of the mayor to take accountability of the personnel responsible for those policies. Everyone seems to be consolidating their own interests. Who is taking responsibility now? Our mayor? Any one of you? We need to put the interests of the community at the forefront. Pressure the mayor to make effective changes within the LAPD. Allow for access within city warehouses for community distributions. We cannot keep paying for storage units to do your work. Stop ignoring small groups like Imigo, Unión Barrio, and Operation Healthy Hearts, who are doing the groundwork. We need your help. We need your help.
Help us, help the city, help us, help!
I would like to call up Lydia Ponce, Jonah Henry, Wendy Miranda, and Alejandro Campillo.
I signed up as Steve Alexander. I'm going to speak on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11.
Okay, speaker, you'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All right, so we have 116 and 117. 116 and 117 are mayor's emergency declarations. Though 116 is related, sort of, to the immigration raids, although it seems like it's, the mayor's declaration is more focused on the protests against the immigration raids instead of the act, the big emergency, which is the immigration raids themselves. That is the emergency, and that is what the emergency declaration should reflect, is the fact that these immigration raids are happening in the first place. Now, it seems like you kind of did some corrective stuff on it to maybe try to make it reflect that a little bit more, so that's good if that's the case. But this emergency declarat, the emergency is not, oh, there's protests against the immigration raids. The emergency is the immigration raids themselves, and that's what you should be addressing here. Okay, we have item, I think 122, which is more, I think maybe that's continued. So we have 120, no, 122 is still there. That's more police funding in CD 12 Stafford B.'s district. No on that, no on any police funding whatsoever. Defund and abolish this police department that assists ICE and other Trump immigration officials while lying and claiming that they don't. We have items 124 and 125, which are lighting up City Hall. We're lighting up City Hall for pride while none of you say anything about how Trump is already planning to use the Olympics that's happening right here to promote his transphobia and to prevent trans people from participating in the Olympics being held right here in the city of L.A. Nothing, none of you are saying anything about that whatsoever, so that's, that's something we should be noting here. We have lighting up City Hall for ADA anniversary while you've literally made the chamber less accessible by putting this extra barrier here that didn't used to be here. People used to be able to roll right up to here. In fact, the council rules still say we're required to approach the podium using the center aisle. You've never even changed that, so you're making us violate the council rules every day while make, while, while making the chamber less accessible. We have a street banner for Dine L.A. You know what would help make, help the restaurants, working to get rid, what would help the restaurants is ICE leaving the city, so you need to push more for that, because people are afraid to go out and eat at their, at the L.A. restaurants right now, because they're worried about, even if they're not undocumented, even if they're documented, just look like they're undocumented or whatever, that they come out and that they're afraid to come out right now because they're worried they're going to be kidnapped by ICE or bounty hunters or whatever, so they're not going to eat at the restaurants right now. We have 140, which is the hate speech ban motion, going to general comment here, I guess, but the, but yeah, the, what I'll say on that, on the hate speech motion, is that I absolutely am against any use of the N- and C- words during public comment. It's racist, sexist, it is disgraceful to have to hear during these meetings. That said, the First Amendment is probably going to get you into a lot of legal troubles if you pass this, so I'm not really sure we can afford those. It's, it's kind of, your heart's in the right place, but it's just not going to work with the Constitution, probably, and it's also a slippery slope towards banning stuff you don't like that's not actually hate speech. Okay, so we have, I have 20 seconds here. You should not be taking this recess. You clearly didn't, don't even, have all kinds of work to do. That's why you crammed 151 items onto this agenda today. It is so large, my phone couldn't even handle the HTML file. Cancel the recess and let's work on the serious emergencies to City Hall.
Before the next speaker begins, Mr. President, it's been brought to our attention that some members of the audiences are playing their electronic devices in the audience, preventing other members from hearing in this room. So to members of the audience, we ask you to not use your devices, and you've now been warned. If you do it again, that you'll probably be subject to removal from this chamber. Thank you. Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
140, 127, and general public comment.
You have two minutes for the items. Please start with the, I mean, you have one minute for the item, the other two items you can discuss in general public comment.
Lydia Ponce standing on a Sagna, the Yagna, the stolen lands from the Tongva people. We have to recognize that Ms. Hernandez has the only one agenda item that matters. We have all these pages of bullshit, because nothing matters more than the children crying down the street. The children are crying down the street, ripped from their parents or left behind on the street, and you want to take insult on 140, on the N-word and the C-word? What about the children that are being taken? What about the children that are left behind? What about their fears and their tears? How dare you take insult while you sit here and worry about your six figures for the year? Pray and cry and find the children that are left behind. That's what matters. 127. The immigration children, I just spoke to that, and I just spoke about the N-word and the C-word. General public comment. There is a city, Los Angeles, mutual aid, rapid response, and tenants' rights without all of you. We're doing it without you. We don't show up, don't show up for your performative moment, your intentional photo op for your website or your next election for reelection. What are you doing? You're taking recess. You haven't done shit to help the families. The children of the disappeared. It's Los Angeles, it's Los Angeles. Go with the community. Do your fucking job for the people. ICE out of L.A.! ICE out of L.A.! ICE out of L.A.! ICE out of L.A.! This is 150 bullshit mob agenda items, and fuck all of you for not showing up!
Good afternoon. Which items would you like to speak to?
This gentleman with the camera has disrupted the meeting more than once. We'll excuse you from the meeting pursuant to Rule 7. Thank you. Sergeants, we'll ask that you see this gentleman out. Next speaker.
Speaking on item 80 and general public comment. My name is Maro Kakusian, speaking on behalf of Wendy Miranda with Esperanza Community Housing, and Alex Jasset from Physicians for Social Responsibility Los Angeles, who couldn't be here today. We support the draft ordinance to remove substantial remodels as a basis for eviction. We call on the city council to pass the ordinance today. We want to thank council member Blumenfield for his leadership on this issue and for his staff in helping us get this across the finish line to protect vulnerable tenants. We also want to thank Blumenfield and council member Rahman for keeping their word to meet the August deadline. Most rent evictions are carried out by landlords who have recently purchased the property. Getting rid of longstanding tenants paying below market rate rents is part of their business plan, and the substantial remodel loophole allows them to do it. We must put a stop to this and pass this ordinance today. Thank you so much, and I call on the city council to vote in support. Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Thank you for everybody who's come out to share with us. Madam Clerk, what items are before, are for us?
Mr. President, the items that are before council at present is item 3 and 4, and that is the, the airport public hearing eminent domain.
All right, let's open the roll on those items.
Uh, no.
Oh, sorry?
Oh, okay, council would like to vote before going in the public hearing for the airport eminent domain, sir?
We can go, we can satisfy public comment for the airport item at this time.
Okay, that is a formal process, so... Then it, the airport personnel should come up to the table now and begin the eminent domain process, so... Let me just make the announcement. This, this item concerns the adoption of ordinances approving resolutions of necessity to authorize commencement of eminent domain proceedings to acquire portions of the properties identified in Agenda Items 3 and 4. First, council will hear an oral presentation from Mr. Mark Adams, Director of Government Affairs at Los Angeles World Airports. After the staff report, members of the council may address any questions they have, they might have for Mr. Adams. Following questions from council, each of the affected property owners or representatives on their behalf may address the council. Any members of the council may then ask staff any follow-up questions. And finally, after final questions from the council, the president will close the hearing and ask the council to determine if it wishes to adopt the proposed ordinances approving the resolution of necessities. Now, the hearing, the hearing is open, and council should hear from Mr. Adams.
Thank you, council president and members of council. My name is Mark Adams, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Los Angeles World Airports. The hearing today is to determine whether the council wishes to adopt the ordinances of necessity, resolutions of necessity, to authorize commencement of eminent domain proceedings to acquire interests in properties identified in the agenda items. These ordinances do not address in any way disagreements over the amount of compensation to be paid for the taking of the property interests, nor does the adoption of the ordinances prevent the parties from continuing to negotiate. It is always possible that settlements may be reached without a trial or significant litigation over the acquisitions, and that is always our hope. But in this case, for the reasons explained in the staff report and the presentation, we are asking that the council approve the ordinance so that staff may move forward with the next legal step in the condemnation process. Adopting the ordinance requires a, ordinances, requires an affirmative two-thirds vote of the council. At the end of this hearing, you will be asked to approve the proposed ordinances approving the resolutions of necessity, which set forth a few key findings that are also listed in the report of the Board of Airport Commissioners. The council filing, the council file and this presentation will give you the facts necessary to support these findings. The presentation, council file, and all referenced documents will become part of the record of these proceedings. If there is any additional information presented to the council, it will be added to the record. If you have any questions about the facts, do not hesitate to ask me. If you have legal questions about the findings, please ask the city attorney. I will remind you that the first two findings, the public interest or necessity requiring the project and the project being planned are located in the manner most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, are applicable to the entire respective projects and not solely to the use of eminent domain for any one of the acquisitions at issue here. The remaining findings apply to each of the specific, specific properties at issue. While the council file details much of what I'm about to discuss, I'd like to touch on a few items. First, each of the properties are required for acquisition by, for two different projects. One, the LAX Airfield Terminal and Modernization Project, or ATMP, as to Agenda Item 3, and the Landside Access Modernization Program, or LAMP, as to Agenda Item 4. The property acquisitions for ATMP and LAMP are pursued only via eminent domain as a last resort after voluntary acquisition measures have been pursued and proven unsuccessful. Lawa provided written offers and accompanying appraisal summaries to the property owners, and despite efforts to negotiate, we have not yet reached agreement for the acquisition of the needed property rights. Finally, notices of this hearing were provided, were, were sent via first-class mail to the two property owners. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the council members that the adoption of the ordinances requires an affirmative two-thirds vote of council, and this concludes my presentation.
Okay, so with Mr. Adams' presentation concluded, I want to check and see, is there anyone, are there any representatives for the property owners at issue? And again, if you are a representative of the properties located at 5928 West 96th Street or 9775 Airport Boulevard, I'd ask that you please come to the left-hand side of the council chambers so you can come to the table. Going once, going twice, Mr. President, I do not see any representatives for the property owners.
All right, given that procedure, Madam Clerk, what's before us? Just to be clear for the record, Mr. Spindler is raising his hands, and I don't know why, I know he doesn't represent the property owners, so we'll disregard his raised hand. Madam Clerk.
And for the record, sir, the council received two letters dated June 27, 2025, from the law firm Allen Matkins, which represents both property owners. These letters were made part of the record, and if council has no questions, then the public hearing for Agenda Items 3 and 4 can, is now closed, and the items can be voted on by council. So council can now vote on 3 and 4, sir.
All right, items 3 and 4 are before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be, let's see, several items where Mr. Price is recused. Would council like to have those items now?
Sure. Mr. Price is recusing.
And for the record, those items are item 81, 143, not yet. So now, since Mr. Price is recused, council can vote on 81, urgent forthwith.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
All right, what's next?
Next, Mr. Price is recused on item 143, and that can be voted on now.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
All right, what's next?
Next, Mr. Price is recused from item 80, and that is amendment, so it should be adopted as amended.
All right, are there any more items that we have Mr. Price recused for that we can hear now?
Nope, that would be the final one.
All right, so let's open the roll on this item as amended, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
All right, what's next? We'll invite Mr. Price back to the cha, to the horseshoe. Who? Mr. Blumenfield.
We just voted on it, but I had called that one special to say a few words about it, which I can do.
We would love to hear your comments.
I can do it after the fact. Now, now that I know the outcome, kind of the, you know, the surprise is gone, but... Basically, I wanted to ask for your I-vote, and I'm glad that you, you voted for this to adopt specifically Recommendation B for this item, the city attorney report, the ordinance effectuating the council's ban on substantial remodel evictions in L.A. And to make it clear, what we're doing today is we're denying rent evictions, but we're also creating a clear pathway to renovations that works for both the tenants and the landlords. When I first introduced this item, I did so in order to protect our, our collective constituents, to clarify the rules, rights, and responsibilities of everyone involved, including both the tenants and the landlords. It was my goal, in fact, for the city to further the work that this council has done with regarding the Just Cause Ordinance a couple of years back. Because our work was to adopt and include a program effectuating the 2019 state law, we had inadvertently allowed a provision of state law to be adopted that included a loophole for someone to get evicted from their units, even if they were a good tenant that paid their rent or is otherwise in good standing. And this is clearly something that's not fair. It's our current law, but the action that we just took fixes that. So in adopting the city attorney's ordinance transmittal, this council has ensured that clarity under the law in L.A., you just, you cannot be evicted for substantial remodel. But this is really important, I want to be clear, the landlord does indeed have the right to upgrade or rehabilitate a union, a unit, and should do so if necessary. In fact, the action that we're taking will ensure that LAHD will come up with rules and regulations to clarify things for everyone involved and quickly, as one of the amendments that we just voted on requests to make sure that that happened and those regulations happen within 90 days, because I didn't want us to just do this and then have it sit there forever. We want to have a cl- to have a clear pathway for legitimate renovations, not rent evictions. And I also want to extend my sincere gratitude to our city attorney, Heidi Feldstein Soto, her wonderful staff from Peter Wolford to John Heath, for their work and assistance to get this item before us. And we could not have done this without LAHD staff that really moved quickly on this. And thank you, Anna Ortega, and her team for it. And with that said, I want to be clear that, that my office has had an open door. We've met and spoke with everyone, from tenants' right advocates to industry professionals and the trade associations. This has been an action that's taken a lot of collaboration with a lot of folks. I'm satisfied that this policy is the right step, and that we in the City of Los Angeles have a compelling government interest in not allowing these kind of evictions to take forward, to, to move forward. And I want to take a moment to thank everyone that met with me in my office, not, not limited to advocates such as Sage, Physicians for Social Responsibility, groups such as the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and the California Apartment Association, Owners, Owners Association. Really, everyone worked on this. So finally, colleagues, I ask, ask for your I-vote, which you have already given, so thank you for that, and accepting the recommendation, adopting option B, and to unanimously do so as we move toward the end of this session. So thank you for your vote and allowing me to, to say a few words and, and express my gratitude for the folks that have been involved with this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Blumenfield. Congratulations. The people's champ, Mr. Bob Blumenfield. All right, what's next?
Next, council may now vote on items two through eleven, one sixteen through one nineteen, one twenty-one, one twenty-four through one twenty-eight, one thirty through one thirty-three, one thirty-five, one thirty-six, one thirty-eight, one forty, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-five through one forty-eight, and one fifty, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next is item four, I'm sorry, item eighty-four, and that was called special by Ms. Hernandez for comments.
All right, do we have any others? I see one forty-four called special by, by Councilmember Hernandez for comments as well. Can we do both of those?
Yeah, let's do it. Wonderful. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I ask for your support in designating Foyero Square and Highland Park. Foyero's Pizza is a family-owned business founded in 1968 by Antonio Tony Foyero, an immigrant from Naples, Italy, and son of an artisan baker. For over fifty years, the restaurant has been a source for jobs, great food, and memories. And when I mean jobs, I mean the people working there have been working there for decades, even, you know, going back to when I was a kid. Tony, his daughter, and his granddaughter, and their family, and their staff are preserving their family's recipes and heritage. And as a result, their business is a beloved restaurant synonymous with northeast LA. When you think about Highland Park, you think about Foyero's. I'm proud to represent a motion to designate the intersection of North Figaro Street between North and South Avenue 56 and Highland Park as Foyero Square, and direct the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to install a ceremonial sign to affect, to make this, to make this visible at this location. Shout out to Councilmember Jurado for seconding this motion to recognize a business that has helped shape northeast LA, a border that we both cherish and, and share. This small but powerful gesture affirms our city's pride in its local history and legacy businesses, legacy businesses that help our budget thrive. I ask for your support on this motion to designate a ceremonial Foyero Square in Highland Park in northeast LA. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's item eighty-four, comments on one, one four-four?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise in full support of, wait, this is one forty-four. Got it. Sorry, it says a few times. Again, thank you, Council President. Over the last month, federal immigration, immigration agencies have carried out coordinated raids across the city of Los Angeles, leaving families and communities shaken and torn apart. People have been taken from their workplaces, parents have now returned to pick up their children from school, grandparents are terrified to leave their homes to go to the grocery store, and we've seen deeply concerning videos of LAPD officers during these operations where their focus seems to be on concerned residents for responding rather than on the violence being enacted by these masked men. That's what this motion before you today is about. It requests the city attorney report back in fifteen days on any laws that require LAPD to respond to support, to respond to support requests from other law enforcement agencies, and whether city policy or municipal code could be adjusted to better protect constitutional rights. It instructs the CLA to review other municipalities and how they handle requests from federal agencies for support in immigration enforcement activities. It directs LAPD to report back within fifteen days on all calls they responded to from other law enforcement agencies between June 6th and June 20th. This includes who made the request, when it was made, the LAPD officers deployed, the actions taken on the scene, and whether any weapons, including less than lethal weapons, were used. And it asks the Board of Police Commissioners to look at implementing additional policy guidance to ensure that LAPD's response to these type of requests aligns with existing laws and codes and policies. Colleagues, we want to make sure that we're not violating any constitutional rights and taking actions that could infringe on that. This includes verifying judicial warrants, confirming the identity of any federal agents on site, and making sure LAPD personnel do not engage in activities that exceed what is legally required. Colleagues, I urge your support on this motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez. All right, so we've got item eighty-four before us. Let's open the roll on item eighty-four. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, and now item one four-four. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item number one, and there are several amendments on one.
All right, I have an amendment on one.
I believe that was called special for the amendments that were introduced by Councilmember Hernandez.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Council President, I would like to rescind amendment one D and move forward with amendment one B as envoys.
All right, seconded by Mr. Blumenfield.
And just to clarify for the record, I believe that there was, this is perfectly fine, Councilmember Hernandez, but there was erroneously what was one D, should have been one A. So there aren't, there is no one C out, hanging out there, or one A.
All right.
So what is before council is one B as envoys, and that item as amended.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item one fourteen, and that was called special by an amendment that has been circulated and before council now, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Next would be reconsidered item one eighteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for a separate vote, but you're okay with that now? Okay.
I think we already voted on one eighteen because the reports were uploaded.
One eighteen, but, but it was reconsidered because public comment was not taken, but now, it is now taken and before council, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on one eighteen, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items one twenty, one twenty-nine, and one thirty-four, and that was called special for a substitute motion, and two votes are required. So the first vote is whether to substitute for items one twenty, one twenty-nine, and one thirty-four from Mr. Lee.
All right, the motions to substitute are before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right.
Next vote would be on the motions themselves.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item one twenty-two, and that was called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for a separate vote.
All right, item one twenty-two called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez. I can't see you because of the CD-14 flowers for a special, separate vote. All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, two noes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item one thirty-seven, and that was called special for a substitute motion. Again, that is-
Ms. City Clerk, can I please be recorded as a no vote for item one twenty-two? Thank you.
Okay, so for one twenty-two, for the record, the final vote is twelve ayes and three noes. Next would be item one thirty-seven, and that is called special because of a substitute motion for this item. There are two votes. First vote is whether to substitute.
All right, let's open the roll, open the roll on substitution, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next vote is on one thirty-seven on the matter itself.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Next would be item one thirty-nine, and that was called, that was called special by Councilmember Park for comments.
Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, the Pacific Palisades reopened to the public on June 14th, and sadly, since that time, my office and others have received numerous reports about commercial tour operators conducting disaster tours in the Pacific Palisades disaster area. These are people that are looking to profit off of destruction and other people's losses. It's really gross, and it needs to be stopped. It's also a plan that's dangerous because we are still actively clearing fire debris. We have a lot of very narrow, windy, substandard roads that are difficult for trucks and large vehicles to maneuver through on a good day, and they're all currently busy with the Army Corps and the other heavy equipment that we are trying to maneuver in and around the area and will continue to do as we launch what is going to be the largest construction zone in our city's history. This motion asks our Department of Transportation to amend their internal rules about tour bus operations and prohibit this activity in disaster areas. While the prohibition is in place, the department will be able to look at a permanent set of restrictions for this very sensitive area. I want to thank the Department of Transportation, as well as you, Council President, for responding with the urgency that was necessary and working with my team to waive this item out of committee. Thank you, colleagues. I ask for your I-vote.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Park. Let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be item one forty-nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Soto Martinez for comments.
Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. First of all, I want to give thanks to the hundreds of residents who raised their voices to try and save this really incredible, incredible program called the Showers of Hope. It's a program that provides unhoused Angelenos across the city the dignity of having a shower. During this budget cycle, we had to make some really difficult cuts, and unfortunately, the Showers of Hope didn't make it. But I want to talk about what that represents. These are thousands of people who rely on these showers for basic hygiene. It is a first point of contact for accessing additional services, a crucial step toward permanent housing, which also builds relationships of trust with people living in the streets. And in addition to that, many of the staff at Showers of Hope are formerly unhoused themselves, and many of them are at-risk youth, meaning by losing this program, it also puts them at risk of homelessness. We're working very closely with the Housing and Homelessness Committee and the Budget Committee to try to find a permanent solution to this funding shortfall, although we know it might be very difficult in order to do that. But in the meantime, this motion uses CD-13 discretionary funds to keep two sites serving our district for at least a few more months while we push for a more long-term fix. I ask for an I-vote, and thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Soto Martinez. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be the vote on special one and one A.
All right, I have an amendment to one A, a technical amendment to change the date from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2025.
And is there a second to that motion? Or amendment?
All right, all right. So this item as amended is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
And an announcement for number one forty. There is no action required today as this item needs to be held over one week or to July 30th, 2025 before adoption.
Excellent. What's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred.
Desk is clear, sir.
All right, announcements, members, announcements. Councilmember Yaroslavsky's.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to start the Budget and Finance Committee meeting at 2:45.
Excellent. And immediately following council, all of us will be in the forecourt for a press statement around the lawsuit against the city. Councilmember Jurado.
Thank you, Council President. Today, colleagues, you'll find a bouquet of flowers at your desk, a small gesture, but one that carries deep meaning. These flowers come from the original Flower Market in downtown LA, part of the Flower District, a vibrant, irreplaceable community made up of small storefronts and street vendors, many of whom are immigrants. They are the heart and soul of this industry. They rise before dawn, arranged by hand, and bring beauty into our lives one stem at a time. But these days, what should be joyful work has become a source of anxiety for many. ICE raids have devastated not only the storefronts in the Flower District, but also the entire industry. Just yesterday, two street flower vendors were detained outside Forest Lawn Cemetery while working, providing flowers to grieving families. These aren't isolated incidents. They are part of a disturbing pattern of racial profiling, unlawful detentions, and the silencing of people who are just trying to make an honest living. I invited vendors to speak with us today, but they were afraid that even showing up at City Hall would make them a target. And yet, even under this pressure, they still show up every morning with armfuls of flowers. They still create joy for weddings, for birthdays, for memorials, and these bouquets are a tribute to their resilience and a celebration of the hard-working hands and hearts that keep our community blooming. In challenging times like these, supporting them means more than ever. So I invite you to take a stroll to the market by a bouquet from a street vendor and talk to the people who make this work possible. Support them not just with your policies, but with your presence. So let's lift up those who keep LA blooming. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jurado, and thank you for the amazing flowers from the folks from the Flower Mart. And I, I would just add to that, Angelenos, we have specific business districts in our city that are empty right now. The Flower Mart is one, the Santee Fashion Alley is another, the 11th Street Electronics Bazaar is another. If you have occasion to use those places, please go use them, because there's going to be some time, I think, before people feel comfortable populating those places and, and conducting business in the way they have in years past. Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the flowers. I will also add to that in my district, Wilmington, Avalon Boulevard, and any farmer's market in the district, show up and buy something. Believe it or not, I had a couple of announcements, but in the interest of time, I'll make one, and I'll make it really, really quickly, and it's a little bit of good news. This week, the International Olympic Committee and LA 28 and the City of Los Angeles were able to announce that they are moving the boat sailing events from Long Beach to the City of Los Angeles. It'd be great for the athletes, great for the spectator, spectators, great for LA. Thank you very much, colleagues, for your support.
Thank you so much, Mr. Blumenfield. Congratulations, Mr. McCosker.
Congratulations on that. So my announcement is concerning July 4th. If you're looking for a great way to celebrate this nation's 248th year since we declared independence as a nation, you can go to the best fireworks show in the City of Los Angeles. I know a lot of folks are converting to drones. We're eventually going there, but if you still want to see the big boom in the sky and celebrate with, you know, tens of thousands of your, your- with, you know, tens of thousands of your friends and neighbors, come to the West Valley, come to the Warner Center, July fourth, before the fireworks, which start officially at nine. You get there early at six. If you enjoy the doors, there's a tribute band to the doors called Strange Days that will be playing. We've got food trucks, all sorts of things. It is, there's a reason why we call it the Blumenthal Fireworks Extravaganza, because it truly is an extravaganza. So come one, come all, and come enjoy.
All right. So we will visit CD three for extravagance. Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Other announcements, members, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add, well, you know, we had a beautiful display of drones, eight hundred, on Sunday. Thousands of families came out, because we also did it as a beach party at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, and it was phenomenal. But I wanted to add, Ms. Hurdado, to your, to your plea for everyone to support so many of those that are being affected by these raids. Folks, we need to remember the restaurant industry and how they're being decimated right now across the city and the backbone of that workforce that keeps our restaurants alive. And so I just want to remind everybody, while we have an opportunity here to not just voice our support, we need to show up in policy to make a substantial difference, to actually ensure that these businesses remain intact so that they can actually continue to employ people. And so that's another reminder of what we have to be really focused on in this city, because we have to lend more than our voices of support. We have to show up in ensuring that they're able to remain in business and continue to offer employment to all of these individuals that are frankly, all in fear. And so, you know, that was, I think, something important that we must underscore. And there was also a lot of concern from individuals about participating in the celebrations of Independence Day. And I know I received a lot of calls and concerns from individuals saying that they don't feel comfortable doing that. What I want to encourage everybody to do is remember that it is important to also show up and continue to provide environments for your communities and to show up and support with one another so that people can help get through these very difficult and heavy times. It's important that communities have outlets to be able to still enjoy themselves and to have positive and constructive engagements with each other as community. And I think that's incredibly important. But more importantly, this celebration marks the first time we separated from king rule. So it's a reminder that we need to continue to push forward on all fronts to ensure that the people's rights that are embedded in the Constitution and that was in the founding of this country, we continue to show up and fight for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. And we'll start to my left with Councilmember Hurdado.
Colleagues, I want to thank you. Okay, now I'm stumbling. But today, I honor my mother. We have missed so many milestones together, and I hope you will indulge me as I honor her. Her death anniversary is this July, so we can finally share at least my first year as council member together. Her name is Jocelyn Jo Joji Hurdado, who was born in Nocturne Laguna, Philippines. She was one of eight children. My lola, her father, had squandered the Coronado money gambling, and my lola was left penniless. So she divided her children amongst family members in order to raise them. My granduncle Mario, a bachelor, decided to become a single dad and raise her as he became an engineer. He was a doting father to her. But once he married, his wife employed my mother as a servant, and at age three, my mother was washing clothes by hand and cleaning the floors and taking care of other children. Despite the servitude imposed upon her at home, my mom never let the sun set on her. At school, she excelled and was a social butterfly. She was a cheerleader, an academic, a debater, and an exquisite dancer. My mom wanted to be a journalist, but under martial law, that was not allowed. So she became a bank employee instead. There, she met my father, who annoyed her enough that she dated him, and amongst all of his admirers, of which there were many, my dad decided to ride off in the sunset with my mom. When my lola immigrated to Los Angeles, she petitioned my mom under the nineteen-sixty-five Immigration Act, which presented my mom an opportunity at a better life. In her twenties, she moved to America to live with her mother for the first time ever, and this is when she famously gave my father the ultimatum: Come to America or marry her or else. And with a thousand dollars in his pocket, he flew to Burbank, leaving the life he knew before him behind him very bravely. They went to Macy's to get the clothing, the rings, and got married at a non-denominational mass wedding in South L.A. And with fifty dollars, they started their life in a basement in Echo Park with his in-laws living all above them and next to them. My dad, who's here today, worked multiple jobs as an undocumented worker until citizenship was finalized after their marriage. They threw telephone books off a truck. They were call center people. And eventually, my mom did get a job here in America at Union Bank here as a teller. That job, and through my parents' hard work and my mom's scrupulous saving, they were able to move to a home in Highland Park where they raised me and my brother. My mom was the life of every party. She was so popular that on the first city council campaign I ever worked on, I would get many votes from Filipinos who remembered my mom because she was a dancer. There was one story where we were at a golden wedding anniversary, and she had danced with the groom so hard, he died on the spot, and we had to leave. That was the kind of dancing my mom did. Looking back, I realize how my mom had inadvertently prepared me for this job. When I became a mom so unplanned, she was one of the few people who wasn't disappointed in me. And she showed me what unconditional love looks like, and how showing up is a large part of what doing the work means. She showed me how to be an organizer without even knowing it, always offering people a soft landing, an ear, or a helping hand. That the joy in the struggle means dancing, singing, and yes, good food, and sometimes it also meant planning for the joy to happen or it wouldn't get on the calendar. All those times she forced me to speech contests actually helped me become the public speaker that I guess I am today. And she also taught me that to challenge is to love, which we did quite often. She challenged me. And it's not lost in me that I do not grieve alone. And the grief now is shared by many whose parents that are migrating her, just like her, are now being taken away from them, and that their grief is even more profound because they can't find where their parents have gone, and their due process are being violated, and they're unsure if they'll see them again. And so I pray to you, my mom, as I always do, and I pray that they find their way home. And thank you, colleagues, for indulging me, and may you rest in peace and may the perpetual light shine upon you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. I want to welcome your family for being with us. Any other adjourning motions on this side of the horseshoe? All right, seeing none from that side. I have an adjourning motion this morning. I asked the council to join me in celebrating the powerful life and gift of one Reverend Dr. Joseph Benjamin Hardwick, whose presence in our community made the city a better place. Dr. Hardwick was born in Oklahoma, moved to South L.A. at a very, very young age, and during his senior year at Jefferson High School, decided that it was his calling to be a minister. He continued his education at California State Dominguez Hills, then at University of San Francisco, and then got dual doctorate degrees from two separate seminaries. Golden Gate Mission Church was his first ministry focusing on spiritual education and counseling. The Golden Gate Mission Church saw so much success that Dr. Hardwick was called here to the City of Los Angeles on San Pedro and Eighty-Third and the Ninth District to be the pastor and to help build Praises of Zion. In nineteen fifty-five, this congregation opens its doors. In the coming years, the church would help South L.A. through very turbulent times. It remains a pillar of our community. With love and respect for his people and deep social consciousness, Dr. Hardwick served as a mentor and guide to dozens and dozens of ministers across the region, from the neighborhood of Venice all the way through to the inland empire, all the way north to the Antelope Valley. To further his mission, he founded in nineteen-seventy-one the Permanent Personal Involvement Center, a nonprofit which still stands and is active today. In nineteen eighty-seven, he was elected as president of the Western Baptist State Convention. His term would end in ninety-one, and he was re-elected again in nineteen ninety-five, and he was kind of always in charge, no matter who held the title. He mentored so many ministers in our region. I would imagine several districts have ministers that were mentored by Pastor Hardwick. He received many awards, including an humanitarian award from the City of Los Angeles, the keys to the city, as well as induction into the Martin Luther King Junior Hall of Preachers. Anybody who's been in South L.A. in our church community knows Reverend Hardwick, Dr. Benjamin Hardwick. As an activist, I first met him because we'd want to go to churches to announce whatever it was we were working on, and he'd sit you down and he'd make you tell him what the issue was. And if he really agreed with you, he would let you make the announcement while the church was being broadcast on the radio. If he didn't, you had to wait and do your announcement after the church wasn't on the radio. But he was always a loving and a gentle soul and supportive of so many of us. And so I ask that we all join South L.A. in the Praises of Zion community and the Hardwick family in wishing him his deserved rest in the beyond. Thank you so much. All right, adjourning motions on this side. All right, Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is a particularly hard one. I rise with deep sadness to ask today that we adjourn in memory of Bronn Levy, a beloved Palisades resident, student at Loyola High School, tennis star, and beloved son, brother, friend, and teammate. We're joined in council today by his family and friends as we grieve the loss of someone so young, so full of promise, and so deeply loved. Our entire Palisades community continues to grieve, and my heart goes out to all of Bronn's friends and classmates at Loyola, which has been home to thousands of CD eleven students over the years. It's hard to find the right words when a tragedy strikes with such cruelty and finality. Bronn was only seventeen, a high schooler headed off to college at UVA this fall, with dreams as big as his heart and a future as bright as his smile. He was just a teenager, but Bronn carried himself with a grace and maturity that left an impression on everyone who met him. He wasn't just a good kid. He was extraordinary. Bronn was focused, hardworking, funny, and kind, a smile so wide, a star so bright, that literally every room lit up when he walked in. And out on the tennis court, Bronn was a force, fierce, competitive, disciplined, and talented beyond his years. People didn't just see potential in Bronn. They saw excellence in action. His performance on the court was matched only by his kindness off of it. Bronn's mom, Jen, shared with me the other day how many people, many she had never even met before, have shared stories about Bronn, how he touched their lives in big and small ways. Whether cheering on a teammate, standing up for a friend, or just showing quiet strength in the face of hardship, Bronn was a star. Bronn and his family knew hardship. In January, they lost everything in the Palisades fire. Their home, their memories, their foundation, reduced to ash. That loss would shake anyone. But as the family temporarily relocated down to Manhattan Beach, Bronn held it together with an inner strength that few adults could muster. He didn't complain. He just kept showing up for school, for practice, for his friends, for his family, for life. Bronn was set to graduate on June seventh. Then he was headed off to the University of Virginia this fall. I know, Jen, how incredibly proud of him you and Dad are. But on Sunday, May fourth, Bronn was stolen from us, killed by a drunk driver, senseless, selfish choice that ended a beautiful life and left a hole in this community that will never be filled and changed the lives of everyone who loved. As a council member for our devastated community, I'm heartbroken. But I am also inspired by Bronn's legacy and the movement that's taking shape in his name. In the wake of unspeakable grief, Bronn's family launched the Live Like Bronn Foundation, and I'd like to ask Jen, his mom, to say a few words.
First of all, thank you so much, Councilwoman Tracy Park. What a wonderful opportunity for our family and friends to celebrate Bronn's life and legacy. We really appreciate it. So thank you. I'm also aware it's been a long meeting, and I'm a mom, so I know what hangry looks and feels like. So I just ask you to hold on for three more minutes while I speak, and then we can all go our separate ways. Fifty-eight days ago, on May fourth, my husband and I got a phone call from a police officer. It's the call no one ever wants to hear. I'm sorry I'm the one telling you this, but your son has not survived an accident. Our son Bronn Levy, he was actually eighteen years old. He was struck and killed by a drunk driver. His life, his future, his light, gone from this world in an instant. Our lives have been forever shattered. Every minute, an hour, is suffocated by sadness. Our daughter lost her only sibling, her best friend. My husband lost his only son, and I lost my baby boy. No parent should ever be faced with this, ever. And there is no greater loss than the one we all carry now. Bronn was incredible. He thrived academically and athletically. He was less than a month away from graduating summa cum laude from Loyola High School and was awarded the Callahan Award. He was a noted and recognized leader at school, a stellar athlete, rated one of the top fifty high school tennis players in the nation in 2025. But beyond all those accolades, what we're so proud of is that he led with kindness, inclusivity, and so much enthusiasm, it was contagious, always giving himself first. Never, ever was there a person who came into contact with Bronn who didn't feel they were already his friend. It was nuts how many friends he had. His intuition allowed him to see and understand everyone he met. He was everyone's best friend. He lived big. He loved hard. He had a bright smile and woke up every day thinking, how am I going to make this a better day for someone or something? He was a natural-born leader and the best kind, the leader who does it quietly with meaning and purpose. Our family's only way to coexist with this devastating pain is to turn pain into purpose. One of the things we've done is create a scholarship at Loyola High School that is now endowed for perpetuity. We've also established the Live Like Bronn Foundation, a place where we inspire kids to embrace life, take risks, show kindness, make their impact. This movement has actually been incredible. The support from our community has been like anything we've ever experienced or expected. we've ever experienced or expected. It's gone far beyond our local areas, from national news to complete strangers. We know his legacy will endure and grow. And it's this support that pushes us forward and fuels our vision. However, I would be remiss if I didn't take this moment to talk about the facts about why we're here. Our lives have been destroyed, and Bronn's life tragically and traumatically ended by a drunk driver. The woman who killed our beautiful son was a woman who was previously arrested for DUI and charged. And from this DUI, she made a plea deal for a hit-and-run. She was free. She was on probation at the time she killed my son. Her license was suspended due to her prior DUI arrest. She was not permitted to be driving. But guess what? She was driving, and she was drunk. And she killed our son. And she is currently out of jail. And we are left to pick up the tragic pieces of losing our son, our only son. This is just one example of the system's failures. A system that is taxpayers and law-abiding citizens are here to protect us. We vote on them. This system has failed before. It continues to fail. And now I have paid the price. I have paid the price for this failure with the life of our only son. My singular voice is backed by a chorus of people who are outraged that this has happened. Statistics show that most drunk-driving deaths occur due to second-time offenders. This woman had a plea deal. She killed my son. And what's even more shocking, she's still out of jail. I'm not only sad, I am angry. So I ask all of you here today who have the power to make change, please help. Live like Bronn. Be a strong leader. Make a difference. Inspire change. And please, help us prevent other lives from being taken that could have been avoided. To live like Bronn is more than a phrase. It's a path forward. It's a way of showing up in the world. And I ask all of you here, please, show up. Every single day is painful. However, I will ensure Bronn's legacy lives on, and I will work tirelessly on his behalf, hoping that I can be the change I know Bronn would want me to be and help prevent these tragedies from happening again. My only request for all of you, officials, concerned citizens, parents, community members, and leaders, let's fix the problem, address the system failure, and please do not let my child's death go in vain. I, for one, will not stop. I will keep fighting until my last breath. Thank you for listening, and thank you for caring. And please, may all of you live like Bronn. I love you, Bronn.
Thank you, Jen. We owe Bronn more than just our grief. We owe him action. That's why today I introduced a resolution in support of AB 366, a state bill that would mandate ignition interlock devices for all DUI offenders, including first-time offenders. Jen, to you and Dan and Adele, and to everyone who loved him, may we all strive to live a little more like Bronn, and may his memory live on through your laughter and your memories. May he rest in peace.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Park. And mom, and all of the Bronn family and friends. With that, members, we are adjourned. Happy recess. We hope to see every member out in the forecourt for our statement to the press regarding the lawsuit against us.